All right, we'll call the meeting to order. If everyone would stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to one and the other of the United States of America and the Constitution of the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we'll approve the -- actually, Sandy, we need a roll call first, please.
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Now we'll approve the agenda with a couple of updates, right Marcus?
That is correct, thank you. The first request is to add a banner request under Communications from the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra. The second request is to actually remove the update under the City Manager's Report regarding the Complete Streets Program. Our presenter for that was unable to be with us this evening.
All right. Someone can make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Anyone have any concerns? Could we have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Shepherd?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Okay, at this time, we will open for public comments, and the first public comments will be for agenda items only and for non-public hearing agenda items only. And if you step forward to talk, if you would please write down your name and address for Sandy, she would greatly appreciate that. Okay, I don't see any, so we will go ahead and close public comment. And the next thing we have is the consent agenda for approval.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Okay, at this time then, we have the public hearings. Marcus, do you want to introduce those?
Yes, thank you very much. Mayor and members of the City Council, the first public hearing this evening is with respect to a street right-of-way vacation request. This is an item that has been before the City Council previously. Additionally, I believe you have within your packets copies of correspondence that we have received from nearby neighbors, as well as, I believe, a petition that's been provided too. This is an item regarding a request from Mr. Durant to have a portion of undeveloped right-of-way vacated along a segment of Kenwood Road between the east line of Seneca Place and the west line of Vic Avenue. Jerry, are you going to be showing some slides on this?
Yeah.
I don't want to speak too much because I know that there is, and there it is. There are some slides that'll show and orient you to the property and to the request itself. I also believe there are folks here from the Public Infect this evening too that wish to speak out regarding the project, or the proposal there.
Okay.
So, Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Okay, as Marcus indicated, the request for you tonight, the public hearing that will be held tonight, is for a request we received by the Durants to close an undeveloped portion of what is known as Kenwood Road. It's really a Kenwood Road right-of-way, and I want to go through a series of slides and hopefully it'll answer many of your questions. Just a few introductory remarks, primarily for the benefit of the public. It's gone. What happened?
We just have to wait, yeah, it'll come up.
Okay, well, let me just go ahead. First of all, the request to vacate did not originate from the city. This request originated from an abutting property owner, property owner that owned property, abutting the right-of-way. So, that's important because I know I've had some folks say, "Well, you know, why does the city, why do they want to do this?" And again, wasn't an action initiated by us. Secondly, as required by city code, oh, let's see. The code requires that any action regarding a vacating is the responsibility of the City Council, but the code requires that you receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission. That meeting was held. The city code doesn't call for a public hearing by the Planning Commission on street vacations. You are required to have a public hearing, but the Planning Commission is not. But as a courtesy, we did notify the abutting property owners. There are only two other abutting property owners, and I know at least one of them's here tonight, Doug Moore. The Fosters, I believe, are still in Arizona, but I'll get into that in just a second. And we did ask the, when we sent out the notice to the abutting property owners, or when I talked to them on the telephone, I talked to both parties, we did ask them to try to be as specific as possible regarding their reasons, whether you're for or against. It would help, not on the Planning Commission, but we knew it'd help you folks as well. And they were good at doing that. In terms of the abutting property owners, there are only three. The Durants, the applicants, who are in favor. Again, this was a time when, this was before the Planning Commission. They represent one of the property owners. They own 300 feet of frontage. That considers both sides of the right-of-way. The Fosters, at the time this was heard, or considered by the Planning Commission, it didn't matter to them. Mrs. Foster indicated to us, they didn't care one way or the other. If you vacate it, fine. If you don't, that's fine too. They own 100 feet of frontage on the right-of-way. And then, the other property owner, the Moores, they also own 100 feet of frontage on the right-of-way, and they were opposed to the vacating. And we'll get into that, and I'm sure Mr. Moore will probably want to make some comments a little later on as well. This is just an aerial of the road segment. Don't know how well you can see it, but on the, would be to my right is Vic Avenue, would be on the east side of the Kenwood Road right-of-way. And then, on the west side is Seneca Place. That's the segment that we're talking about. Again, it's undeveloped. It's what we call, and maybe if you read the article in the Cadillac News, it's what we call a paper street, in that it was drawn as a public right-of-way, as part of the subdivision that was developed years ago, but in this case, remains on paper, but was never developed. Just another shot, kind of more of a regional shot. You can see, again, the green space, just kind of shows the road system around the area, and we'll be looking at that shot again in a little while. Some site information, again, it's an undeveloped street, it's part of a platted subdivision, the Sunnyside Park subdivision, which was platted in 1939. So, although it was platted in 1939, some, about 75 years later now, it never has developed. The right-of-way is 66 feet wide, which is pretty typical of many of the streets in the city, and it has a length of 250 feet. As we discussed, there are three property owners that abut the right-of-way. The Durants, the Fosters, and the Moores, and just indicates which lots they own. I think the next one, yeah, not going to be, I see this real well, but the Durants own all of the property that abuts the right-of-way on the north of the green, on top of the green, and then, south of the green, so to speak. To my right, next to Vic Avenue, 100 feet of frontage on the right-of-way. That's the site that's owned by the Moores. The Fosters owned the 100 feet in the middle, and the Durants also owned a little over 50 feet, the site that is, abuts Seneca Place. So, just to kind of give you an idea of who owns what and where. Just, I have three shots that I took the other day. Surprising snow, but I, this was taken, the first two shots are taken from Vic Avenue. Essentially, we're more or less looking at the area of the right-of-way. In the distance, you can see some homes, those would be over on Seneca Place. But this is the basic area of the right-of-way. You can see that pile of snow in the middle. There is a driveway that does, is located within this right-of-way, so that's why you see a driveway in the pile of snow. Just basically, another shot, again, looking towards the west, showing the general, you might say, landscape of the area of the right-of-way. And then, this next shot is taken from Seneca Place, looking east. And you can see that the area along Seneca Place is a little more wooded than the portion of the right-of-way located near Vic. But just gives you an idea of what it looks like. And I know someone that live around there, so you've probably seen this a lot. The Cadillac City Code governing plat amendments, as I've already mentioned, provides that the City Council may vacate a street located in a subdivision following the receipt of a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The section doesn't provide detailed reviewed standards for the Planning Commission governing undeveloped paper street right-aways, but the focus of the section in the code, very basically, is to promote orderly development and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And I'm going to run through some of the things that the Planning Commission considered as they made their recommendation. As the Planning Commission reviewed it, obviously, naturally, they looked at, you know, is there a need for the street over the long term? And particularly, as related to future vehicular movement, do we need to put a street in there so that automobiles can, you know, go back and forth? And with respect to that, one of the things that became very obvious right at the beginning is that all of the abutting properties, those properties abutting this right-of-way, had other means of access on a developed street, either Vic Avenue, Seneca Place, or North Boulevard. So, the vacating would not preclude direct access off a pre-existing public street. Planning Commission felt that was important. Planning Commission also looked at, you know, is there a need for the development of this right-of-way at some point in time as a through route? And I'm going to go to the next slide, I think, yeah, I'll come back. The green, again, on the slide there, represents the area, the segment we're talking about. If you'll go essentially, two blocks over, you'll see the red segment. I believe it was 1996, the city vacated that portion of Kenwood Road. So, effectively, any lengthy through movement through Kenwood Road is already eliminated due to that particular vacating. So, it was an action that occurred some years ago. Let me go back. The, two things that the Planning Commission did have some discussion on, one was, even though there may not be a need for a street going through there, what about pedestrian access? Neighbors in the area, you know, what about their ability to be able to maybe go from one block to the other, or move through there without having, let's say, to go on North Boulevard to do so? Be it pedestrian or via bicycle? So, that had some thought there by the Planning Commission, some thoughts that maybe that would be a positive. Also, as is customary, even though there aren't any city utilities in this right-of-way, commonly, when you do vacate public property, particularly streets, you normally reserve aneasement for city utilities, and so, the Planning Commission felt that should be considered by you as well. Again, we just looked at that one. Again, Planning Commission looked at, you know, what would be the impact of the vacating on the abutting properties? One of the things that obviously comes to light is that 66 feet of right-of-way, the north, in this case, the north 33 feet would automatically go to the properties on the north, and the south 33 feet would go to the properties on the south. So, in terms of the applicant, they would end up with a little over 8,000 square feet of additional property, I should say, almost 10,000. On the north, they would, they have, I believe it's 250 by 33 feet, equals a little over 8,000 square feet. They own the one parcel, 102 Seneca on the south, so they would acquire another 1,650 feet. And then, the central property, the Fosters, and then, the parcel located on Vic, the Fosters and the Moores, they each would gain 3,300 feet. That property essentially would be melded or rolled into those existing lots, and it would not only increase the size of their lot slightly, but it would also result in a modest, probably a modest value increase, and also, probably, a modest increase in taxes. Did try to contact, or did contact, but haven't heard back from them. They're unfortunately closed today, the county equalization, to see what that might equate to, but I don't have that information right now. The Planning Commission also looked at the fact that if this were vacated, it would preclude any rear access potential for the Fosters, that center lot, you might say. Not that they're using it now for rear access, but it would eliminate it. One of the positive things that they also looked at, and let's see right here, is that the vacating would avoid what we call triple street frontage. Let's take, for example, let's take the Moores who owned the property. It's a house right of the corner of Vic and North Boulevard. That site has frontage, developed road frontage on North Boulevard. It currently has developed road frontage on Vic Avenue. If this right-of-way were developed as a street, it would have road frontage on Kenwood Road. So, it has what's called triple frontage. Same thing would occur to the Durant's lot there on the west. And generally speaking, we try to discourage triple frontage lots. Now, obviously, it's not developed, so they don't have triple frontage lots at this time. And you can see too, I think you can see that the A just happens to be under the red A, that's the Foster property. Again, if this were vacated, there would be no potential for them, at least unless they had permission from the abutting property owners, to access the rear of their property in the future if they so desired to do so. Planning Commission looked at the fact that it has not developed since its inception 75 years ago, so seemed as though there's really no apparent need for this particular street system, or street segment, I should say. Also, we had talked with the Public Works Department, the Engineering Department here at the city. There were no plans on the books, on the work, so to speak, to develop it, and had, essentially, from their standpoint, had no reason for it to be a public street system. Planning Commission recognized that there were alternative east-west routes that existed via North Boulevard and Chestnut Street to the north. Eliminating it would reduce some potential liability for the city and maintenance, not that we're giving it much in the way of any maintenance at this time. We also looked at the fact that it's not needed for additional area development. In other words, by vacating it and then adjoining it to the abutting properties, doesn't all of a sudden increase the potential for creating new lots, adding additional homes and so forth, which runs into that last little bullet. It essentially does not directly increase the potential for additional homes or additional residential density. Part of the reason for that is due to the configurations of the existing homes in that area. They've been constructed on double and triple lots without real thought as to, I shouldn't say without real thought, where they're placed would markedly impact their ability to meet any zoning setbacks, and so, it effectively precludes any additional development. You'd essentially either have to get variances or destroy the homes, which I don't think's going to happen. In terms of, what about maintaining the right-of-way? It's not that they, you know, they didn't look at the, just the negative, so to speak, but again, they recognize that it did afford, in particular, the Fosters, but all three property owners, it did afford the abutting lots and alternate means of site access if they wanted to use it. It could have possible use as a pedestrian path through, as I mentioned, for area residents. If you were to vacate it, you'd have to do that through aneasement, for example. And it does allow, or could allow for city utility infrastructure if that were ever needed, according to the city engineer, he doesn't think it will be, but again, it could be provided through aneasement. And another nice thing about the system is we now have, or the segment, it does serve as a nice green space for the area neighborhoods, so I'm sure the neighbors appreciate the trees and so forth. Yes?
Jerry? Sorry to interrupt.
No.
Interrupt. I do have a question for Jerry at this juncture, which I think would be important for the whole group, including Mike. You know, if you can just go back to that last slide.
Sure.
With respect to the two stars in the middle, where you show, you know, aneasement within parentheticals, you know, tonight, you know, we are having, as you know, the public hearing with respect to the ordinance for the vacation. Just throwing out sort of an afterthought, though, that perhaps if, based upon Council's deliberations after the public hearing, it is looking like they are willing to move forward with approval of the ordinance. Wondering if the Council at that point should actually pause on the approval of the ordinance so that we could put together the aneasement documentation, or would that, maybe this is really a question of Mike?
I believe they're in there already.
Are they in there already thoroughly? Okay. Because I thought that there was still a question as to whether or not we could...
But there can be some modification of those anesements in terms of size and...
Correct.
...conditions and so forth.
That's the question is, are we putting the cart in front of the horse, or the horse in front of the cart?
Well, I think, again, we're coming at this from the Planning Commission's perspective right now, okay? And I think as we get to the end, when we get into the Planning Commission's recommendation, I think we'll answer your question.
Okay.
Okay? Super. Again, at the Planning Commission level, Doug and Jill Moore did provide written comments, they're part of your packet. And again, I don't want to go into a lot of this tonight because Mr. Moore is here, so he can obviously speak for himself. But at the Planning Commission level, the issues that surfaced by Mr. Moore, he indicated in his communication that they, his family did enjoy the green space, they liked the fact that it served as a buffer. He did use the property, or the property was used, I should say, throughout by his grandchildren for play. He was concerned that the vacating was being requested for purposes of providing access for some type of future development of the area, particularly development that might be of higher density, and he didn't want to see that happen. And also, he felt that he needed the access, the right-of-way, for a garage that he planned to construct and for pulling boat lifts onto and out of his property, and that the current situation made it much more convenient for that. Very, you know, very logical reasons. Let me give you the Planning Commission's basic response to those. In terms of the green, enjoying the green space as a buffer, the Planning Commission felt the Moores would be getting a piece of property 100 feet long by 33 feet wide, which would be added to their property, so they could maintain a green space as a buffering area. Obviously, be less than full right-of-way, but it would, to some degree, fulfill that. Terms of use of the property by grandchildren for play, the concern there by the Planning Commission, well, if this were developed as a street, as designed, you would totally eliminate that possibility. In terms of the vacating being requested for providing access for future development, Mr. Durant was at the Planning Commission meeting, assured the Planning Commission that was not the case whatsoever. And the Planning Commission was also aware of the fact that the amount of land and the situation would not necessarily precipitate, you know, any sort of significant additional development. And in terms of the access for the planned garage construction, for pulling a boat lift onto the property, again, the Planning Commission felt that the additional 33 feet of right-of-way would be more than sufficient to accommodate both of those needs. So, while they took the comments to heart, again, they tried to very logically, you know, respond to them. We did talk to the Fosters, Mrs. Foster, again, they were in Arizona at the time, I think they still are, and she basically told us that they neither supported nor opposed the vacating, and that was conveyed to the Planning Commission since the PC meeting, and you have it in your packet, Mrs. Foster did call indicating that they had changed their mind, and I asked her if she would be kind enough to send a communication, which she did, and has been provided to you. The Planning Commission recommendation was five to two, I'm going to kind of get towards the summary here, but let me read this if I may. And essentially, from the Planning Commission's standpoint, "Based on a lack of demonstrated need for the development of Kenwood Road as a vehicular route as originally platted, based on the fact that all lots abutting Kenwood Road have existing frontage on fully-developed streets, and based on the fact that the vacating is not anticipated to impact the orderly development of the neighborhood or city, the Commission recommends approval of the vacating subject to the following conditions." And those two conditions, and I'll, let me go to the picture. You see the arrow. There is a driveway that serves that house that's on the north side of Kenwood Road. It would run essentially through the middle, more or less, of the right-of-way. If this were abandoned, a portion of that driveway would likely impact the 33 feet to the south. So, one of the conditions was that that driveway would have to be relocated somewhere north of that center line, so that it would be totally on the abutting property owner's property. I'll go back to this. And basically, it went on to say, "The permitting design and construction of the relocated driveway shall be compliant with city requirements, and the driveway shall be relocated not less than six months following Council's approval of the vacating of the street," obviously, if you do vacate it. And then, the second condition, the Planning Commission worded it such that "Provided the Council determines that it is in the public's interest to do so, the City Council shall reserve the right to use the vacated street or portion thereof for purposes of constructing and maintaining utility, communication, energy, or other public infrastructure, such as sidewalks or bike paths." And they did want to point out that there are no city utilities that presently exist in the right-of-way. There are utilities that go through Vic, Sewer and Water, and Seneca Place, but not through this right-of-way. We had two dissenting Planning Commission members, and I looked at my notes and so forth. We don't have a problem with dissenting members, and I went back and thought, now, why did the two fellows, you know, why, what were their concerns? And I think that one of the main ones was simply a lack of agreement by the abutting property owners over the vacating. They would like to have seen the three property owners get together on this, and I think the Council customarily likes to see that happen as well. You never know, there could be a possible future need for the street, and once, if it's vacated, then that right-of-way essentially is gone. And then, lastly, the situation has existed for many years, and the question, you know, is there a need to change things at this time? So, and I'm almost finished here. Just a few additional comments. Again, from the Engineering Department, Public Works, "There are no plans to develop the street as a vehicular roadway for automobile use, at least not on the books right now. And according to this, nor has there been a demand to do so over the years." As I mentioned, the right-of-way is void of city utilities, they're found on the connecting streets. And since the article in the Cadillac News, we have received four, what I call unsolicited comments, phone calls, from four property owners, I should say, living, two lived on Seneca, two lived on Vic. None of them wished to see the street developed. I think they were kind of under the impression that, well, I know they were, they were under the impression that the street was going to be developed, and told them what it was all about. We asked them the question, you know, "What about the vacating?" And none of them had issues with the vacating, but again, I don't have anything in writing from these folks, so, but just as a result of Rick's article. And I'll try to answer any questions. I know you have the Durants here tonight, you have the Moores here tonight, the Fosters, I'm sure, aren't here, and there probably are others, so I'll be here in case you have any questions.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned the Kenwood Road that was vacated back...
Ninety-two. Ninety-six, I think.
Ninety-six, okay. What initiated that vacate?
No, I went back, looked at the City Council minutes, and the record is just not clear enough. Yep. Looked at the minutes to see why, and it happened, but I can't tell you why. And I wasn't here, so I don't...
Just to clarify, the driveway that would have to be moved, just to make sure I know which, who's the property owner of that property?
The Durants would have to move that driveway. They own all the property north of Kenwood Road, and the house north of Kenwood Road that this driveway serves is their house, it's owned by them. And so, the driveway right now kind of meanders through, you might say, the midsection of the right-of-way, and so, if this were vacated, we'd want to make sure that no portion of that driveway... And so, if this were vacated, we'd want to make sure that no portion of that driveway was on any of the 33 feet south, which would end up being the Moores.
Just a quick generic question is, do you know, as you mentioned this being a paper road, do you know how much of that exists in the city? Is there a...
Paper roads?
Easy way to tell. I know we've dealt with some of these.
Throughout the, regionally, there's a lot. You know, a lot of subdivisions, in particular, were developed, like in the '70s, '80s, '90s, the early '90s, and with the demise of the economy and so forth. There's a lot of plats that are out there that neither the lots nor the streets or roads have ever been developed. And there's a fair number of these. I wouldn't say it's, you know, a tremendous number, but they're found throughout the city.
When the planning commission talked about an easement through the center of this, for utilities and possibly a walkway or pathway, did they, has anyone talked about the size of that?
Yeah, the utility easement tends to be, and I wish Bruce were here, but minimally 10 feet, up to 20 feet. And the thought was, well, why not make the pathway area, coterminous, equal to whatever the underground utility easement is? Because, you know, if you put a pathway, whether it's a chipped pathway, or an asphalt pathway, or a cement sidewalk, that's, and let's say it has to be taken up at some point in time, that's not that expensive to do if you're dealing with utilities. So it just made sense. Why not make them both essentially the same dimension?
But that whole area is, right now, serviced with utilities that are not in that easement.
Right. Yeah, all the homes are served by utilities in that area. No plans to put any additional utilities in.
I have other questions. I guess now's the time to ask them. Some of the concerns that I've heard is related to people using this public property, because right now it's currently public, for their own personal storage and driveways. And, you know, I know it doesn't happen just there. It happens in other places in the city as well. And it doesn't seem like the city is enforcing the ordinance that says that's public and you really shouldn't be using it. Is it too difficult to, or, you know, maybe I should be asking Marcus these questions about why we don't do that? And if...
I could answer.
Go ahead and answer that, because, and then, it's not really a leading question, but I have one afterwards.
If the city is made aware that a public right-of-way is being used, let's say, for the placement of a structure or the storage of something, we would initiate action to have it removed. The city does not go out on a daily basis, driving the streets, looking for situations like this. Typically, it's the result of a neighbor complaining. To my knowledge, and I talked to Bruce and others, we've not, we've never had a neighbor complain. Secondly, if you were to drive by this, the average person probably wouldn't even realize that it's a public right-of-way, including a lot of city folks, okay? Because it's not developed. It's treed and grassed and so forth, and you just don't think of it. But again, if we're made aware, which we are, with respect, you know, to this particular right-of-way, we understand that there are some things that are laying there, so to speak, or that are found there that shouldn't be, and we'll initiate the action, if need be, to get them removed. We've done that in the past. I can name you a number of times where we've gone out and required people to move, remove, I should say, structures and so forth. But, you know, we'd like the public to help us a little bit and make us aware of something.
Thank you.
Now, Jerry, I had asked a question, just because this is all new to me. You know, when I look at that piece of property and I compare it to the other lots that are close by, you know, it looks to me like, you know, rather than give that property away to the abutting property owners, why wouldn't we create two city lots out of that property? And you answered the question, but could you share that answer again?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. First of all, the code provides that if a street, for example, is vacated, that it automatically, half of it goes to the abutting, you know, the ones on the north or south or east or west, depending on how it lies. There's nothing in the code that says, okay, we're going to vacate the street and therefore, you know, put it out for bid, sell it, and so forth. Secondly, generally speaking, and that would be the case here, the lot sizes that you would end up with typically don't meet zoning. And so, therefore, would not be developable, so to speak. So.
That, just pigging back off that, that's if it's being a request of a vacation versus a sale of...
Right, right. Yeah, we have city lots, for example, residential city lots, for example, that we do try to sell from time to time. But when it comes to, like, a street vacating, the code's very clear, you know, that you can, as the city council, vacated, will go on to say that the vacated, the vacated right-of-way then gets, you know, combined into the abutting properties, is made part of the abutting lots.
So I had a concern expressed to me that this would then be developed by the new property owners, but you answered that, that there is no, it would not meet...
The way, the way the lots are currently developed, there is the possibility of getting one additional home on some of the Durant's property to the north, but they could do that now, okay? They could do that now. So unless you were to take down the homes that essentially exist and reconfigure things, essentially, you kind of, you have what you have.
Okay.
Now, you can enlarge the existing homes. This would give you more capability to do that. You could add rooms, add a garage, add a storage building and so forth, but it would be associated with the homes that currently exist.
The other concern that I have heard is that the people in the area like the rustic or the wooded atmosphere, if you will. And I don't know if there's any way of being able to try to maintain that if this were vacated. You know, I'm looking at the map, and the Durant's own those four wooded lots with one house on it to the north of this, and it seems like if they wanted to, there would be nothing that we could do if they wanted to cut all the trees down on the lot that they, lots that they already own.
Yeah, we don't, the city doesn't have, for example, like, a tree ordinance, okay, that would preclude them from, or any homeowner from cutting down the, you know, the trees on their particular property. In terms of conditioning, a vacating on, and I'm just talking hypothetically here, on, you know, maintaining all the trees that are above a four-inch caliper, for example. I suppose, you know, you could attach something like that. I'd want to think about how we would structure that. I wouldn't want you necessarily to make that decision tonight, because we want to be fair to people. We want to be fair to the property owners, as well as the public in this case.
You said that the planning committee, in addition to the utilities, easement for utilities, also approved or recommended a pathway through there?
Yeah, well, the thought was that if you have a utility easement, basically, you can't build over it anyways.
Okay.
Okay? And so, while it would have some impact, and may be considered negative by the abutting property owners, I mean, right now, you could put a street and sidewalks through there.
Yeah.
The thought was, if there is a desire on the part of the neighborhood to really want to move through there, you know, instead of having your children, for example, who may live on Seneca Place, instead of having them having to go, let's say, south onto North Boulevard, walk North Boulevard, up Vic, maybe cut a, you know, a rustic pathway through there. But to do so, you'd have to, you know, as the planning commission wanted to do, you'd have to attach a condition that indicated it could be used for that, city would have the right to do it, et cetera, et cetera.
Because I don't think you can get through there now.
You can, well, not right now. It's lost snow.
No, I know, it's snow, but it really looked...
You can, yeah. It's pretty overgrown right now. Yeah, there's no, to my knowledge, and I haven't been out there in a long time, but to my knowledge, there's no formal pathway that goes through there.
Yeah, I don't see how you'd get through it.
But if the vacation was not granted, because that is plotted for a road, depending on the property owners, they could request that a road be put through there at some time.
Sure. Or the city could initiate a road.
And the same is true with Vic Avenue.
Right, right. The Vic Avenue, there's a, as it makes the corner of the turn, so to speak, north of that, again, it's another paper street, that could be developed at some point in time as a road too, if, for example, let's say, the property owners requested it. And we have that happen again, here at the city, from time to time. Most of our vacatings here in the city, and we don't get that many, tend to be the vacating of alley segments, it seems like. We don't get that many street vacating requests. We don't get many vacating requests, period.
Okay, is there any more questions for Mr. Adams? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You got it. At this time, we would invite anyone from the public who would like to speak. Do we have a three-minute?
Hi, my name is Andy Van Alst. I can get that on here. All right, I don't have access to the screens, but I did make some pictures and stuff, so if I can get those to you guys, and you can look at the information that I compiled. Again, my name is Andy Van Alst. I live at 205 Alexander, just around the corner from the proposed Kenwood Road vacating. I first heard of this because a friend saw it on CCTV, way to go. Then I talked to one of the larger landowners and decided what my position would be on this. And then somebody suggested we get a petition together. I put a petition together, and then I circulated it to people in the neighborhood, and none of the neighbors that I showed it to were even aware that this proposal to vacate was going on. So they were all grateful. They were all grateful that I stopped by and talked to them. I own three lots on Vic. That makes me a little conflicted. I stand to gain personally, if a road or driveway is constructed on Vic Avenue, it'll bring access closer to me on my back lots. However, I don't think that's the purpose of, that makes this proposed vacation a public Jerry is very thorough on his presentation, and so I'll probably repeat a lot of what he said. That it was dedicated in 1939 to the use of the public. Thirty-four years later, in '73, the paper road turns into a road and a driveway to serve a house constructed at 2010 Kenwood Road. Thirty-nine years later, in 2012, it's been, now it's been a road and driveway longer than it's been a paper road, and the Durants buy it, the property located at 2010 Kenwood Road. Eighteen months later, the planning commission recommends approval to vacate in response to an application to vacate from Robert F. Durant Jr. One month later, I delivered to the city council a petition from the local taxpayers asking to deny their request. What started it all, this recommendation from the planning board to vacate was not as a result of a city audit of paper streets that can be converted as a source of revenue. It comes from private interest. The application was delivered with a letter stating, "Both of the other property owners that had joined the property are in agreement." There could not be in more disagreement. One was in favor, one was against, and one was undecided. I do not believe the planning board would recommend this vacating if they knew the Fosters and the Moores and almost all of the neighbors are opposed. Mr. Van Lenty seemed apprehensive in question if the city council would be able to deny this vacating. The planning board was only making a recommendation to the city council for review. They can overturn it. The current uses, currently, it's used as a road and a driveway to a home located at 2010 Kenwood Road, not Vic. The utilities, I, I'm wondering where they are, if they're in the easement. I went by there, and I can see that there's a power line on the south side of the easement that I assume carries electric, maybe cable, maybe phone, maybe internet. I don't see a pig out there for propane. I don't see a diesel or fuel oil tank. So then, I assume that their trash is getting picked up by the city, so I question whether or not there's city water and sewer going to that property. I'd be surprised if there's a drain field in the city limits. Will not extinguish the easement that is over Moores. And then what are the setbacks? He's got a power line, and then you go down the middle, so the area that he's got left for putting a garage is limited. The future roots, the future use, when I met with Mr. Durant after we circulated the petition, and I asked him if he could give me a public benefit for this vacation, and I said I would likely change my position. What I've got is that the Durants have no plans to develop, and the city has no plans to development. And so far, I like the city's plans. There is a finite amount of things that they can do, while the plans that Durants have are infinite. They could do anything. They could convert it to a rental. I think that it recently went under inspection for a rental. It could be a garage, houses, condos, workshops, storage, jerry-cut trees, all of them. And so far, I like the city's plan. And if the property that is sold that the Durants don't control, any of those owners will also be able to cut the trees and do whatever they feel like. Some of the petition signers were asked if they would prefer a road to the vacating. That's not even the question at this time. The only question should be, should the road be vacated? Nothing else. The future need of this street may not be obvious or seem likely in the foreseeable future, based on the surrounding development. But what if the vacant lots are developed? As a matter of due diligence, did anyone appraise the land? What's the land value worth? I mean, if it's worth nothing, then the property taxes should be nothing, and the property taxes for the undeveloped land in the area should be nothing. And part of the appraisal should include the value of the trees. What kind are they? How old are they? Is there any value? There's white pines there, there's giant oak trees. And is there, I'm not an expert, but I, what if there's veneer quality? And then the mineral rights also have a value. The maintenance on this piece of property could be confused with blatant disregard. It's unauthorized trimming of trees. It's no different than if I went to your house and started cutting trees out of your yard. Knowing the cutting down and removal of huge trees, they have stated that they hired Joe's Tree Service to cut them. And if you knowingly cut trees on property that you don't own, I understand, that's trouble damages. Currently, it's used for storage of docks, hoists, firewood, cars, trucks, tractors, trailers, snowmobiles, trash cans, and whatever else lies under the snow has been filled. There's a shed on it. In a public space, does any of this maintenance require a permit or approval? The Moores burying fish debris in the easement seems like the best use so far. The Durant's letter to Moores dated that indicated that he buries fish there. At least, it's legal and it attracts wildlife. The Durant's stated that they don't cry to the city when a tree needs trimming or a tree falls, they just take care of it, probably because they cut it. If the city wants to avoid feuding neighbors, don't create a new neighbor situation. It doesn't make sense, and there's plenty of, that there's, and there's not plenty of room, to relocate this partially-developed street to a never-developed Vic paper street. What are the city requirements to use Vic? Where's the petition with the majority of the property owners? Is there a permit approved? What are the city's standards? Can I use it to access my back lots? I can clearly see Vic Avenue going through someday, and it will increase traffic. North Boulevard will be even more congested than it is today. Kenwood Road will be, may be needed for vehicular or pedestrian traffic. This subdivision is far from developed. Over 20 lots remain undeveloped. It seems premature to vacate when there's so much future potential. Historically, the owners in this area have enjoyed the large wooded areas that have, by choice, not been developed. The Durants say they want to leave the trees, and they don't want a road either. That is consistent with what everyone wants. It was stated in the December planning board that it takes... It was stated in the December Planning Board that it takes a majority of adjoining landowners to build a road. The Durant's are majority owners. The trees can only be cut with city approval. The Durant's have what they want, the petition signers have what they want. If nothing changes, everything, everyone has what they want. Vacating this easement will give away public property for minimal taxes, and how much? Nobody knows. That question is still hanging out there. If the city thinks that the land is worth nothing in this area, then what will the taxes be? Should we all expect a huge tax reduction as a result of this vacating? The question should not be, what are the objections to vacating Kenwood? If 35 petition signers, most taxpayers in Shadyside Park, are not enough, what is? After 75 years, why does the Planning Board think now is the time to vacate this road? Is there a valid reason that supports a change in conditions in the neighborhood, a need for the vacating, or is there a public improvement? The Durant's have attempted to contact some of the petition signers in person, by telephone, and/or by mail, and I'm sorry that I presented the petition with their information to the city, only to be confronted for their input. The Durant's claim there is some confusion regarding their motives. The petition clearly states, quote, "Petition request to not vacate Kenwood Road between Vic Avenue and Seneca Place. By signing this petition, I would like it known that I am not in favor of vacating or closing that part of Kenwood Road between Vic Avenue and Seneca Place. We, the undersigned, request a proposed request to vacate this public road be denied," end of quote. There is no mention of the Durant's motives. The petition makes no argument that a road may go through this easement in the future. In the December Planning Board meeting, the question was, "What does it take to put in a road?" was asked. The answer given was something like, "A majority of abutting landowners must be in agreement to build a road. Since the Durant's have the majority, they have what they want. It would be much easier to preserve the woods if they were not cut. They are getting scarce in the dedicated land. If the road is vacated, it will become even scarcer. The resolution requires the existing road and driveway to be relocated so as not to traverse the southerly 33 feet of the existing road. Therefore, it will be necessary to construct a road presumably to the north on Vic Avenue. There is no hint of a road or driveway in that proposed area now. Why implement the use of a true paper street that has never been used to terminate another not-so-paper street that is currently in use?" That's my last page. The rezoning application procedure is maybe, on that, there's a part that talks about vacating streets, although I don't know that it exactly applies, but it's, when I downloaded rezoning application, I got these rules that were saying a change of conditions in the neighborhood that support it, a need for vacating, the MUNIC code calls for a public improvement. When the Planning Commission deliberated, and they laid out 11 reasons to vacate versus four reasons to deny, if you add the information there with the public improvement, that's it. That's the minimum standard. Then add weight, and on a scale from 1 to 10, those first 11 reasons to vacate won't hold water, but the four reasons to deny will be overwhelming. And that's why I say, I think that the only requirement that I can find that's really applicable would be a public improvement, and that would be a minimum standard. And I don't think that they're there. So, the Michigan compiled laws stated, within 25 meters of a lake, it would take a circuit court action to vacate. Then they also talk about it being necessary for the health, welfare, comfort, and safety of the people of the municipality. I don't think any of those are real solid rules or laws that apply to the vacating, but maybe they should be adopted. Then also, in the newspaper, I see where they say they lived there for 12 years, but they don't. They live on 115, it's been a cottage. Paper road goes through their front yard. They knew that when they bought the place. It's dedicated, is an undeveloped street, right of ways are commonly referred to as paper street, but if they're developed, then what are they called? Because they only exist on paper. But there's a maintained road, an address, utilities, so I think that's a road. When we went to the city, they said it shouldn't be a problem. So when Durant's came to the city initially to request that, they were told it's not going to be a problem. I don't know how that comes out. She added, "If someone wants to buy one of the properties that abuts the paper road and had the money that that owner could put a road through there." But that question was already asked and answered, that it takes a majority. I have fear of vacating Vic. I don't want access denied because of somebody using it for storage. I think that has been requested to be vacated in the past. I think Jerry said he was surprised it hadn't been requested for vacating at the December Planning Board meeting. It occurred to me that some of the people who signed the petition may have changed their position, because I have thought about that myself. So on February 12th, I sent an updated status report on what's going on to everyone who signed the petition, and I asked for any questions, comments, or concerns to call me. I gave them my phone number. I received one response. It was a question regarding development language. Therefore, I must assume that all the petition signers are still not in favor of the vacating. There's no change of conditions in the neighborhood, there's no need for the vacating, there's no public improvement, it's not necessary for the health, welfare, comfort, and safety of the people of the municipality, there's no need to vacate. If it was your property, would you give it away? Is there a public benefit to be served? We ask that the city disregard the Planning Board's recommendation to reject this proposal to vacate. That is basically, in a nutshell, what I'm talking about, and I've provided all of the stuff with the letters that back up what I'm saying. You all have seen the map before of the people that were opposed, and that's overwhelming. I mean, I didn't go to Tustin or China to get people to sign this petition. So, then you have all the pictures of the current use of the easement, and also of the utility lines that encumber the south side of the easement on Vic Street, and then that, where it shows the power lines, is also showing the north part where the trees will be cut to access a new driveway off of Vic. And then I also put pictures of Vic Street in on the, from the north side, looking south of what a actual paper street looks like, with the lots still in there. And I included recently-developed paper streets, so they can, if you're looking at revenue source, that would be maybe a way to get it rather than just vacate it. And then a bunch of letters that back up what's going on here. Let's see. Then my question, and I was asking Carla, a part of the city resolution, on page two out of three, "Whereas, the city has determined that adopting the proposed ordinance vacating a portion of the public street is in the interest of the public health, safety, and I don't see it. I mean, and then there, I have other questions here too, as far as what the public benefits are. Very interested in what the public benefits are for vacating this street. And like I say, if you read, I think the, might be the last page, and apply the public improvements to the deliberations that they had, you'll see that they, the 11 reasons don't carry much weight. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'm Ed Bosworth, 218 Seneca Place, Cadillac, and I tell you, Mr. Van Alst is one tough act to follow. My wife and I own a total of 10 lots in Shadyside Park, seven of which join Vic Avenue on the east, and Mr. Durant's property on the south. We have lived at this address for 43 years and appreciate the wooded lot behind our house. We are adamantly opposed to vacating Kenwood Road. Mr. Durant has already approached the Fosters about buying their property. His goal is ownership and control of all but one parcel of vacated road, that being a piece 33 feet by 100 feet at the extreme east end of Kenwood Road, adjoining property owned by the Moores. I have a short letter prepared for the Cadillac Evening News, but it was never published because today is holiday. I'll read that now. Why are few so hell-bent on abandoning Kenwood Road? One man and his wife stand to greatly increase the value of their real estate holdings. Everyone else stands to lose. Upon learning this plan, a petition was circulated opposing this action, and the vast majority of neighbors signed it. In the meantime, Mr. Durant, who owns adjacent property, has assumed ownership of the platted right-of-way and is using it as his own. He has violated every rule in the book by clearing, cutting, filling, grading, storing, and parking on land he does not own. In addition, he has placed a building on this property that clearly encroaches on the right-of-way. Now, at this late date, he has requested the city abandon Kenwood Road and give him the land share of that property. Jerry Adams of the Planning Commission stated in a recent meeting that you can choose to cut the trees and plant a garden if you own the land. Otherwise, you need permission from the city. Mr. Durant had no such permission. He should be reprimanded for what he has done, certainly not rewarded. The common goal is to retain the woods. That will not happen with private ownership. The Durant's have already demonstrated that by their actions. Once given away, the right-of-way would be gone forever, and the new owners would gain full control. Why is Kenwood Road suddenly up for grabs, and how does that benefit the citizens of Cadillac? We have lived in this neighborhood for a total of 54 years, and no previous owner adjoining Kenwood Road has altered it in any way. Suddenly, there is a problem, and the Durant's don't understand why. There is criteria in place to be followed when considering the abandonment of platted road. Kenwood Road does not meet that criterion. The city of Cadillac need not spend money to define and retain a utilities easement when they already own the entire right-of-way. Just say no and lay the problem to rest. Save the roadway for the public use as intended. My wife and myself and our neighbors who signed the petition, thank you for your consideration. I made some notes as the other people spoke, and as Andy mentioned, Mr. Durant's house on the east end of Kenwood Road is accessible now by Vic. If this change goes through, then that requires cutting trees, I'm sorry, is accessible by Kenwood Road, and it would require cutting trees on Vic for the new access. So, if you keep an easement down the middle of the abandonment, there is not 66 feet left to be divided, so that changes things. As far as developing the street, it's already developed or devastated, whichever you wish to call. I looked at the slide that Mr. Adams put up here, and the street is obviously wooded, not anymore. Trees have been cut, brush has been cleared, and all, in my opinion, illegally. Mr. Adams said that no one has complained. I would like to initiate a complaint right here, now, tonight, and have that investigated. Thank you.
Hello, Counsel. My name is Doug Moore. I'm one of the adjoining property owners. As you looked, I was the one along Vic Street. I'm going to kind of tell you the story, how this has all played out. Last summer, I was out working in my, it was in the springtime. I was out working in my garage, and Bob and Linda walked over, and Bob talked to me about vacating. He said, "I think I'm going to see about vacating the road back there." And he was talking about it, and he said, "What do you think?" And I says, "I really don't want to do that, Bob." He says, "Why?" And I says, "Well, let's say you and I down the road get in a piston contest or something, it's just going to be a problem back there, you know?" And I said, "I like having the city access there, you know? I got 66 foot that I can access, and I do swing out through there quite a bit when I'm pulling in boat lifts and stuff. I got a big pontoon lift that I pull out in the fall." So anyway, to make, to make a long story short, that was kind of the end of it. I never heard any more of it until Thanksgiving weekend, I was up. And there's been several times where I asked Bob, "What are you going to do with the house back there, Bob?" And, "Well, Thanksgiving time." He says, "Well, we're going to have Thanksgiving dinner there today." And I said, "Oh, that's good." You know, and I know Bob wants to build a garage, he's made that clear, and I asked him where and what, and he's always been real evasive on it. So, after I talked to him, I came in the house, my wife said, "Well, what are you going to do about that?" And I says, "No, I'll probably let it go through." Well, then shortly after that, my wife and I were home, and we got a notice from a friend of ours, and they, they made comment that Bob Durant was wanting to buy the Foster's home in between. So I'm thinking, unless he just likes paying property taxes, I don't know why he would want to buy the two frontages along North Boulevard and then have all this, other than maybe to develop it. So that's where I came up with, I was against it, because I think it might possibly get developed down the road. Don't know. Maybe, maybe I'm all wrong. But anyway, so I wrote a letter off to the city. I called, and I've dealt with Jerry when I was putting my place up, and so I called Jerry, and I said, "Jerry, you know, I'm kind of concerned about this." And he said, "Well, just send a, an email, Doug." He said, "You really don't have to be at the Planning Board, it's just a formality before it goes to City Council." So I sent a letter off to the City Council, or to the Planning Board, just stating the views that you saw about liking the green space, I like having access on the back of my property. And quite honestly, I pay a lot of taxes there, because I live downstate, so, but that's going to be changed in April, I'm going to be a resident up here. But I don't need any more tax liability, and I, so I started talking to Jerry, and I said, "Jerry, if this," I actually watched the film on CCTV, the planning meeting, and they were talking about an easement going down there. So I just talked to Jerry here a week or so ago, and said, "Jerry, if this strip goes down through there, if this was vacated, what's the setback on that?" So Jerry says, "Well, let me look, Doug." So he looks up, and he says, "Well, you got 30-foot setback." So out of 33 foot, I'm going to acquire 3 foot of usable space. It just doesn't make sense, from my point of view. And then I got curious, I thought, well, I don't know why Bob and Linda didn't do this in the summertime when Fosters were there, and I thought, maybe they don't even know about it. So, I called Dick and Doris about three weeks ago, I think it was, and asked her how her husband's doing. They made it aware to Bob, to myself, next summer, this coming summer, they're going to sell their property and move to Florida, because her husband's health is going downhill quick. They want to get down close to kids. So, the, we started talking, and I said, "Are you aware, Doris, of even what's going on?" And she said, "Yeah, I am." And I wrote a letter to, or I called the city and told them, you know, that I didn't care one way or the other, you know, because Bob said you were in favor of it, because you wanted to build a garage back there. And I said, "No, I'm not in favor of it." I said, "Bob told you wrong." I said, "I told Bob in the springtime I didn't want to, and at Thanksgiving time, when he came over, I didn't want to get in an argument with him about it, so I just kind of let it go." And had I not heard from friends that he was going to try to buy this property next summer, I probably would have let it went, but I thought, I'm going to send a letter off. So, anyway, when I talked to Dick and Doris three weeks ago, I never mentioned it to her, but she, she brought it up to me, that, yeah, Bob has, you know, already approached us about wanting to buy this property. So you peoples can see where I'm concerned about having a big block of property there, and I don't know what's going to happen. Now, I do know, over the last 70 years, or whatever, Now, I do know, over the last 70 years or whatever, that road has been there, same way with Vic, and it hasn't been any street proposed down through there. As Jerry Adams says, they're not expecting to ever build a street down there. Bob doesn't want a street to go down through there. I don't want a street to go down through there, so we can vote down any street going through there, other than if the city said we are going to for some reason. And if that was the case, and the city needed that street, then they would have that option. If they give it away, they won't ever have that option. And Jerry asked me that. He said, "Well, why would the city want this, Doug?" And I said, "Because once you give it away, Jerry, you can't get it back." So I had talked with my wife about it, and we have just decided that it benefits us in no way. And as the Foster's have -- once she found out I was against it, then she started voicing her concerns. So I said, "Doris, do me a favor. Send me a letter, email, whatever, and I will make sure it gets read at the meeting so that your voice is heard." And I said, "When I get out of that meeting tonight, when this is all said and done," I told her, "I will call her. She's out in Arizona, so her time's a little later than ours, and I'll let her know what is going on." She even asked in the letter there, if you look at it, that this might even be postponed until they get back and can find out more information on this, what's going on. So that's another option that you guys can think about. But my big concern was, when this was all going on with the Planning Board, I sent an email, and I thought I was the only one. When I came up, I don't know when it was, a month or two ago, month and a half ago, my neighbor called me and said, "Hey, you might want to get with Andy." And I said, "I didn't know Andy from anybody." I said, "Who's Andy?" And he said, "Well, he lives up on Alexander. He's got a petition going around about this vacating of Kenwood." And my neighbor that I'm talking about lives right on the corner, and they said, "We signed it. We don't want it to," you know? They're like Ed here. They've lived in the neighborhood forever and ever, and they don't want to see it vacated. Everybody in that area loves the wood. You have Vic Street going to the north, and Kenwood going east and west, and it's a nice big area, got some, as Andy said, huge mature trees there. So anyway, you know, I mentioned in my letter, if everybody in the neighborhood was all for this vacating, I would go along with it. But that's not the case. Almost every neighbor in that two-street area, if you look at the map, is against it. So I want to get it on record that I thank all these people, that they spoke up and voiced their opinion on it, and I hope you guys listen to the public and do not vacate this. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Brian Chapman. There seems to be one resounding theme to all the comments tonight, and that is that no one wants this area developed. But to go along with that theme, the comments that are being made against this abandonment lean towards the idea that, in the future, we may need this street because there's a possibility that there may be future development in this area. Mr. Van All spoke to the fact that there's 20 undeveloped lots in the subdivision. Mr. Moore has stated, he stated to the Planning Commission, in his letter to the Planning Commission, that his family is very concerned that Mr. Durant's reasoning for alley abandonment is to provide additional space for future development, to which his family would strongly object. And then in an addendum to that, in an email to Jerry, he said he just wants to keep the city right-of-way and access as he plans to put a garage on the back of his property. So who's developing what? I've been friends with the Durant's for a number of years, and they own a lot of property. It's their retirement plan to have rental properties and things to, you know, assets. But I remember when they bought the cottage on Seneca, at the corner of Seneca and North Boulevard, sitting there on a summer evening, having a couple of cocktails, and Bob looking back at those woods and saying that he would give anything to be able to buy that portion of the property to prevent anyone from developing that because he bought that cottage on Seneca because of its tranquil location and whatnot. So when the property became available for sale, Bob and Linda begged, borrowed, and stole to buy that property to protect those woods. They have, over the 13 years that they've owned that cottage on Seneca Place, I can't even tell you how many times that they've lamented how they don't want any development in that area. Mr. Van All says in his comments that he didn't go to China to get any petitioners, and that's entirely true. But if you look at the petition, there are two signatures on there from residents on South Lake Mitchell Drive, so I can't see how they would have any interest in the property at all. There's also one person who lists a post office box in Boone, Michigan. So there's three parties involved in this. There are three property owners that are directly affected by this, and so I don't think that the City Commission should give that petition any more than a passing glance with your Planning Commission's recommendation to vacate the property. It's not going to cost the -- it's costing the city more tonight, holding these hearings and things than this abandonment is going to cost in protecting the easement and whatnot. But I hope that you'll follow your Planning Commission's recommendation because, in the grand scheme of things and how this government works, we have these commissions and these committees in order to advise you as to what's best for the city to move forward so that you all, as a commission, don't have to spend your time doing this. If you're not going to take the recommendation of your commissions and your committees, what's the point in having them? So I just hope that you consider that there's a fair amount of conflicting information coming from the opposing parties on this matter. Thank you.
I did not realize I had upset my neighbors so much, but that was never my intention. It's been pointed out, we don't live there. Our legal address still is 115. That's where Durant Plumbing and Heating is our business. I can honestly say that we stay at 102 Seneca 80% of the time. I don't think we have stayed at the 115 address 20 times in the last year. We are planning on moving there. Do I know which house we're going to live in? No, we're still arguing over that. But yes, I am going to rent that back. I have rented that house on Kenwood. I'm not saying it's always going to be a rental. If I get my way, it's not, but... And we did talk to Dick and Doris Foster when they said they were talking about selling their house. I just asked them, "Do you have any idea what you're going to ask for it?" We haven't made them an offer. We haven't tried to purchase it. The reason I asked is, I do have a sister-in-law who lives in California that's thinking of moving back to Cadillac. But I haven't made any offer on any house. I don't have that kind of money. I'm not trying to buy up all the property in Kenwood Park. That house that is -- when we did buy Briggs Davis' house, I asked them for 10 years if they would just sell me part of it, the part towards Seneca, just the woods. And she always joked, Mrs. Davis always joked, "No, you'll end up buying the whole thing." And she was right, I did. But I know we have a boat hoist sitting on that easement. No, we don't have docks and other hoists. They are on our own property. We do own those lots to the north of that easement. That hoist is there right now. It's there in the winter. It's never there in the summer. If that is a big problem, we will push it off into the woods farther to the north. As far as my shed, I'm not sure about that. I have a log cabin shed. If anybody's driven by there, you've seen it. It's my garden shed. If it's sitting on the easement, so are the neighbors' fences. Maybe there is, maybe a piece of it is. I'm not sure. I have never looked. It's not built there. It's portable. It was brought in, set there. It can be moved. They say I'm cutting trees down. That was referred to. I did have one tree removed. I believe it was December. And honestly, when I had it cut, I really thought it was on my property. It is in the front, it was in the front yard of that house at 2010 Kenwood. It split from the base to the top. It twisted, and it was going to go through that house. I kept saying, "Let's wait till spring. Let's see what we can do." And Joe Silver from Joe's Tree Service, who is here, who can answer your questions, he got hold of me and said, "That tree's not going to make it till spring. It's going to go through your house." He came in at great expense to me, picked it up, he cut it off, picked it up, gently set it down without breaking any of the other trees around it, and it's still there. Later, I looked, and if I measure off the 66 feet, because when I was looking at it, I was looking at Kenwood Road. And I thought, "Well, it's in my yard from Kenwood Road." And honestly, if Kenwood Road had gone through, that tree would have still been there. It would have been on the side of the road. So it's not that I'm going down through that easement, cutting trees. I have no intention of doing that. I have two goals. One is, I don't want now, or I don't want in the future, a road going through that section. That would be the front yard of the chalet at 2010 Kenwood. It hasn't been needed for 75 years. I don't think it's needed now. I don't think it's needed later, and that's why I asked for it to be abandoned. But my biggest goal was, I have always wanted to save the trees. I am not interested in cutting a bunch of trees down. We have paid a lot of money to Joe to trim up oak trees that are on our property. He tells me the month we can do it so we aren't hurting anything. Trees need maintenance. If they get diseased or damaged and fall down, they take down a lot of good trees right around them. That's the only thing I have intended to do. I guess the neighborhood wants a bunch of dead trees laying there. Well, if you deny vacating this, I guess I'll just have to find out if a tree is going to fall on one of our properties, the city comes and takes care of it. I'm not sure how that works. But as far as the four lots that we have back there that are wooded, I have no intention of cutting all those trees down, but I am going to clean it up. I mean, trees that are dead are getting cut. Trees that are laying down on the ground, they're getting cut up. To me, that doesn't look good, but I guess some people think it does look good that And I had a lot of things I was going to say, but they have kind of, everybody's hit on all of them, and I guess they think that we have all kinds of money and going to make a big development, and that is not my case. That's not what we're going to do. We don't have that kind of money. We're going to retire there, and that's our intention. And if you have any questions for me, please ask them.
Thank you, Linda.
I took some notes, started figuring things out as the people were talking. They're talking about the amount of property, number one, okay? The amount of property that I may end up with would be 9,900 square feet. One acre is 43,264 square feet. So we're ending up with not very much land. People ask, you know, "Why?" And I guess in the paper and other people have called around and asked, "Why do we want to do this? Why do we want to do this?" I would like to join our north property with our south property at the one end. We own the lot, the property, the house, the log cabin-looking place on Seneca Street on the corner. Everybody that seems to go by it says how much landscaping she's done. We've had trees planted out in front. We've maintained trees. We had Joe cut down a tree. It sprouted a really nice maple. We're trying to keep the trees. They were talking about putting easements through. Utility easement's understandable, yes. There is a pole on, more on Mr. Moore's side of where the easement comes through from the corner. And I don't know if, I don't think it serves our house. It may. I didn't look at those wires. But a block away from this property that we're talking about, the city has already shown that in past practice, they will take a road out that is existing, that has been paid for by the city of Cadillac, the tax dollars, and eliminate it. They've taken a road out for Cadillac Rubber and Plastics to go between the old city garage and the new, and Avon. Understandable. There's a good reason for it. But they still took out city-paid-for properties. I don't know if they got sold to those companies, but if expanded the company and brought jobs, why not? Somebody had mentioned about if I could develop the lot correct, right directly behind my cottage, you know, add another house in there. I think Jerry might have, or somebody, not sure who it was. It would be really hard. That house isn't a well. That house does have cable TV. It does have electricity. It does have natural gas. The sewer for that house runs to Seneca Street, so it runs right through the properties, right due west. So those two lots technically, I don't think, would even be develop-able because the sewer's located there. A lot of what you're hearing, I feel, in my own opinion, is smoke and mirrors. When it went in front of the board, and the review board, and they said, you know, they agreed to do this. They said they would recommend to the City Council it be abandoned. That's when it was all clear. Doug didn't want it, didn't see any need for it, okay? Foster's at that time didn't care either way. I wanted it. A lot of it went my way because I own 100% of the property on the north side. I own approximately 20% to 25%, I think it is, on the south side. As far as talking about a sidewalk, I guess, but they took out a road a block away, a real live road, and put, there's four-corner fences, no gates. Nobody can use that. Now, they're trying to change everybody's ideas of what's going to go on, what they want to see go on. All we want to do is make it so a road doesn't go through. I want to have access to it. I want to put my boat hoist on it without somebody complaining. I want to be able to trim the trees without somebody complaining because they need trimming. You don't need a bunch of brush and vines and thickets all over the ground. At the end of the driveway where the big snow pile was on the picture, that is nothing but a row of big, huge stumps that had been in place since 1973. Ms. Davis and Ms. Briggs built that house. They had a little log cabin there prior to that. Everybody's saying they want to use that, they want to use that. Well, then, why hasn't the city been plowing my snow? I'm the only person that has ever graded that driveway, plowed that driveway, or maintained that driveway. The only person. Doug uses it to turn his boat hoist around, put his dock in. Why not? I don't have a problem with that. But I'm the one that grades the driveway. It's a neighborly thing. I did mention to him, like he said about abandoning the road back there. And he did mention, "Well, I don't know. I don't remember if he said yes or no. I know there wasn't. I don't know." I know there wasn't, I don't know. But then he mentions about putting a garage back there. So I'm gonna be the one maintaining the driveway for the snow removal, because he's gonna move up here in April. I'm gonna be the one maintaining it for, in the winter, grading it. It's a city road, and they don't want anything to change? I don't understand. I just don't, I guess I can't follow what they're looking at to what we're looking at. If need be, if Mr. Moore doesn't want to go with the, he says he'll end up with like three feet. I don't know how it works. I don't think, it's impossible. If it does get abandoned, if I had to buy that three feet from Mr. Moore, or buy the property from Mr. Moore, so I can actually, if I did that, and he wanted to do that, I could leave the driveway in the same spot? And he wants to build his garage, he could still use the driveway. I'm not scared to be neighborly. There's been some issues told to different people that they didn't trust, that, certain people don't trust me. I've been in business in Cadillac for 38 years. I graduated Cadillac High School in 1977. I've been here long enough to know who I can trust, who I can't trust, and I guess if I wasn't that trustworthy, I would still, I wouldn't be here. I've said enough. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It takes a lot to get me to City Hall these days. As you know, I haven't been here for many meetings for quite a while. But I was watching this meeting tonight on television, and Jerry Adams, you did the great job you always do, but I don't always agree with you. I've known these people a lot of years. I know Joe real well. I know Bob and his wife. I know Andy Van All since he was a little boy. And I know you've got a lot of property owners here. And when you take this vote tonight, I hope that you will remember who voted for you, who put you in office. Myself, I would like that paper road to stay the way it is. And I want you to remember the people that you're voting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Marcus?
Mayor?
Where do we go from here?
Um, officially.
Okay. Well, okay, first I have to officially close the public hearing. So thank you all.
Thank you. The next, the next sort of step in this process would be to see if there's any further board questions for either Jerry or for myself. Jerry, I'm not sure if you have anything further to add. Probably not from your presentation earlier.
Not at this point. Be happy to answer questions.
I, you know, I, I can add, or at least offer, you know, this is, this is a situation where, you know, there, there really is not a strong recommendation in one, in one area, or in one, one direction or another, from your staff on this. This is a situation, as, as mentioned during the presentation by staff, that this road has been unused, a paper road for the better part of a century. It's not maintained by the city. And, you know, if we had not received a request from a member of the public abutting it, we would not be, we would not be here this evening having this public hearing. This is not something that the city spends any time focusing on, that being, looking at, at paper roads or alleyways throughout the city and essentially vacating them. Perhaps at some point down the road, we may do that, but right now, we're just not staffed, if you will, to, to spend our, our resources and energies doing that. So it's really, someone comes to us, then we'll pursue it. You know, with respect to the, the question that's before council this evening, it's sort of, you know, do, do you vacate or do you not vacate? I think you heard some, some pretty compelling testimony as a part of the public hearing for both sides of the issue. I think you also heard some, some good information from staff as a part of Jerry's recommend, recommendation, excuse me, as part of Jerry's presentation, you know, about the technical aspects of, of the area in question, about what's feasible down the road, should it be vacated versus should it not be vacated with respect to at least future development. From all accounts, and Jerry certainly correct me if I'm wrong, it, it, it does appear that, that the way that the lots, or the properties are currently situated on the lots, there would not be a very easy process at all for there to be further development of those sites, such as the addition of, of new, of new homes. While certainly there could be perhaps an addition made, such as a garage, or an addition made to the home, that would likely not trigger a zoning variance, anything more significant likely would. You know, what are your options? You know, the options of the city council? You know, you can approve, you can not approve, you can choose to, to table the item, which just simply prolongs the conversation to another, another point in time. I'm not necessarily recommending that. The language does, in the ordinance, refer back to the utility-related easement. I know that Jerry Adams had mentioned that, you know, you could perhaps utilize that, that area for some form of rustic walking path that has to be left open, assuming that this goes through as a utility easement. Something else that would factor into, you know, further council discussion and deliberation also is, you know, you, this is a situation where it didn't just come straight to city council, it did go through a process through your planning commission in this instance, and they did make a recommendation. By me saying that, I'm not necessarily advocating that the city council always adheres to a recommendation from another city board or commission. I'm just simply making the statement that you, that there was already a, a public process through that board. They did make a recommendation that was then forwarded to you this evening as a part of this whole process. Recognizing that what I'm giving you is not explicit, city council should do X type of direction, I think that this is sort of a rare occurrence, where you do have, you know, almost, almost a split here. You know, I hate to call it a coin toss, so I'm not gonna say it's, it's a coin toss, but you do have some really good points on both sides of this issue that perhaps it's just a little further, further board conversation you'll be able to work through. And, and I'm right here, and so is your staff, and so are people on both sides of the issue as well, still in the room, should there be some further questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, sometimes things are really easy and clear-cut, and other times they're not. And as I'm sitting here listening to everybody speak, it, it reminded me of some of my own experiences, and I know my folks were in a similar situation, wanting to buy some extra prop, wanting to get the property around them to keep things from developing. And then I have another relative who did something very similar with getting in something vacated and ended up building a monster garage there that really ticked off all the mayor, all the neighbors. So, you know, so I'm sitting here going, okay, I'm trying to read what people really want. And what I'm hearing is that generally what people want is the same thing. That people want this to stay a green area, an undeveloped area. And so now it comes to, what is the best way to keep that in place? Now, I also was a member of the planning commission before I sat on this board, and I know those people. And I know the kind of thinking and careful consideration that they put into every decision that they make. And I would, I, I'm thinking that the best way to avoid development is to indeed vacate this road and create this buffer there. That, that the neighbors who are directly involved with it, from what I heard from every single one of them, is that they don't want to develop. I heard from Jerry that there isn't room to develop. And, and so, you know, I've, I gotta tell you, while I was listening to this, I, I've been writing here, you know, I'm thinking of voting and put, no for this. I'm thinking of voting yes for, I mean, it was going back and forth and back and forth. But ultimately, everybody wants the same thing. So we just have to decide the best way to maintain that same thing for them. And I for one think it's to, I think it's to go with the planning commission.
I appreciate everyone's very thoughtful input to help us make the best decision, but, you know, the planning commission did spend a good deal of time on this and made their recommendations, so I'd be real interested to hear what the rest of you have in that regard also.
It's, yeah, I can kind of echo a little bit what's been said. I hear, we don't want a road. We wanna keep it woodsy. We wanna keep the atmosphere the same way. We don't want it developed. And we still want to be able to access it being possibly a rustic pathway. And, and I do hear the same things. I don't know if we can add any of those in conditions. I don't know. I guess that's more of a legal question for Mike. But, you know, I do hear the same thing. I don't want it developed. I don't want a road through. I wanna keep it woodsy and natural. And, you know, I think I talked with Andy. I said, you know, somewhere, the last thing you ever want in a neighborhood is, is disagreements with neighbors. I mean, that's, that's a terrible situation to get into. And I had said, Andy, when he had called me, I said, Andy, where's the middle ground? And there's gotta be a middle ground. And, and I kind of pulled out the same thing other council people have pulled out, you know? I'm, I'm hearing those common threads that are running through it. And this is a tough decision, and, you know, I mean, I don't know. Can we, you know, I mean, I'm just picking from people's conversations on what the middle ground is. To the city, I, I drove around and around, and, and Mr. Adams will say that, and I think I've spent 45 minutes trying to figure out where that land was. And I came in finally, I said, Jerry, I says, where is this land? And he pops it up, and I said, that's what I thought it was, but I don't see how it could be accessed now in the condition it's in. You know, if you wanted to walk your dog, or if you wanted to cut through there, I don't see how it could be dealt with in that manner, as it is right now. And I don't see the city spending that kind of money to clean it up, or we don't have that kind of money. But, yeah, I, I just wish that we could pull what everyone wants here and put it in a package that all of you can wave to each other as you go to each other's, as you go home. And, you know, it's not one of those cold, icy stares at each other. I don't want that. That, that's not good for anyone.
If I may just jump on, as I mentioned, I, there, there is language regarding the utilities-related easement already in the documentation that's, that's before council this evening. Mike, how would we, from a procedural standpoint, if there were to be some additional type of protection put in place, you know, to help maintain the character of that, of that right-of-way should it be vacated? Is it something that would be amended at this point? Is it something that would come after consideration? Do you have a suggestion for council on that?
Well, the city has the authority under statute to reserve both a public utility easement and a, and an easement for other public purposes. Right now, the ordinance is drafted such that it only reserves a public utility easement and not any easement for another public purpose. So if the council does want to reserve an easement for another public purpose, say a walking trail or something of that nature, then we would have to revise the ordinance accordingly.
And that, that process of revision, what, what does that mean with respect to tonight's procedural?
Well, if the city wanted to reserve such an easement, I would suggest then that you wait and make a decision on a revised draft, because where that easement is located, how wide it's going to be, I think we probably need some direction on. And I haven't discussed that issue with Jerry yet. The only easement that is currently reserved in this ordinance is a public utility easement.
Does that require then another public hearing?
No.
Or does that come back just to council for ratification?
Correct. Yeah, there's nothing that requires the city council to make a decision tonight, only that you hold a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, which is what's being done.
So I, if I can just kind of reiterate again, I think as, as you move forward with your deliberation this evening, basically what Mike is saying, which I think I tried to allude to earlier, is you don't necessarily have to make a final determination right now regarding the passage of the ordinance. If there's consensus, at least through council, about wanting to have additional protections put in place, we would then come back with a revised or updated version that would include some of the things that's been talked about, maintaining the character of that, of that right-of-way, the, you know, having an easement that would allow for the future of a, a rustic trail. I mean, these are things that just because you put in there, don't necessarily mean the city would actually implement them, but would at least have the right to do so. Should, we need to have that access for those various purposes.
And by calling it a rustic trail would help protect the nature of the area as it is now?
Well, I just want to caution city council, we, we currently do not have a, a tree preservation ordinance in place. Meaning, you know, that, that folks are able to do what they wish with trees and other greenery on their, on their property. And so, I mean, it's a whole separate, a whole separate ordinance and, and discussion area. We don't, I mean, we don't have that in place at the moment, and so I don't believe we can, you can simply just say, well, you can't, you can't touch any trees that are there. You have to go off of, I believe, the, the feedback you've received tonight with respect to making that kind of judgment call.
Rather.
Is that right?
One thing that is most troubling to me with this whole situation is that, like council member Melima pointed out, is what has happened to the neighbors during this In my mind, it just seems obvious that, you know, this road isn't being used for anything anymore. And we talk about it being in the public good, but nobody even knows it belongs to the public. There's no pathway through it. You can't even get through the brush. And, and then, you know, so the, the people who live around it use it for their own personal use. And then you have somebody who lives on both sides of it, and it's kind of in their way. And they really don't know how to behave around it because it's not their property. It belongs to the public. And, but the public isn't maintaining it. And so, you know, you, you just get this really strange situation that frankly, probably needs to be rectified. I guess I would ask those who are not the Durant's to think about what this, what this would be like if you owned those two pieces of property and you made that request to the city. Because, you know, you, you do want that. You want to be able to, to not have something else in the middle of your two pieces of property. And, you know, the other argument is, yeah, but they knew that going into it. They did. And if there was a compelling reason to leave it in the public good, I, you know, I, I would agree to do that. But we're not maintaining it at all, and there are huge trees on that, and I can see that, that starts to become an issue. I have a lot of notes here.
Yeah, so do I.
I have a lot of notes here.
Is there any chance between the neighbors that when, if we do take a look at Is there any chance between the neighbors that when, if we do take a look at going back and adding things to the ordinance, that we could get a group of you to gather so that we could have a buy-in in that neighborhood? I mean, are you willing to sit down and say, okay, I'm willing to move here? Bob's willing to move there, you know, okay. You know, I mean, is there anything that we can do in that area? I mean, there's gotta be some kind of a compromise. Pardon?
One of the neighbors won't be back here until probably.
Yeah. But if we, okay, even if we got the two of you and you have communicated, yeah, I realize, but you do have communications with her, do you not Doug?
Yeah, but if we're gonna sit down, I would like to sit down all of us.
I just, I just, you know, trying to find some kind of a common ground. So Bob, I'm sorry.
If, you know, if we could come to an agreement between the city council and Doug and I to take and figure out some way that the center of that road is, we, we have, have the center of the road still maintains the road because on the map it is him and I split, plowing it, whatever he says he's gonna be moving up here. He doesn't have a snowplow. I have a snowplow. He's got a snowblower. He'll, he'll have to snowblow it sometimes, I'll plow it some days. I don't care about that so much as having people walk through it. It would still, if it stopped there, it would still really give access to Dick and Doris' backyard where it dead end at my property and at Doug's.
If you want to.
I mean, it's a park. I just, I just don't know who in this gonna maintain the trail, ensure the trail. Somebody twists an ankle. I mean, you're always open for a liability, which is the hard part.
It's funny, but I hear all this conversation, but I haven't heard anybody say anything about the person who sends grandchildren go there to play. Did you all forget that?
Yeah, but they don't play on the road.
No, they play on the property.
They play in the green place between the trees and the road, which is a good idea.
Okay.
When I, when I first met Bob, I asked if there was a public benefit, and I spelled out her public benefit for the vacation.
Okay, I'm gonna close that down just because we closed the public comment and, not that all of those comments aren't appreciated, but I, I think that we all did hear everything that everyone was saying, so.
I don't know if both council members, Spelman was speaking to you, I don't know if you're finished.
Yeah.
Did you?
Edit art. I wanted to just hit on a few things.
I'm done for now.
Part of this is just a reminder to ourselves as, as well to the public. It puts us in a tough spot when there's a committee or a board that looks at it. Sometimes we know, for example, with the public safety committee, it was chosen not to go by their recommendation. We sometimes do follow them. This one's a little unique because sometimes on the, on each level of government, it becomes an extra step that's required. And there's a reason they have it go through two boards. It's kind of a checks and balance per se. Matter of fact, it even requires a super majority by the council. So there was definitely a need when they did the city's charter, the constitution, where they said, we want both steps. Matter of fact, we can't even, if the planning board said, no, it can't move forward to us, or if the planning board recommends it, it's kind of that extra step. So I did want to clear that. If, if there's any discussions against the planning board, it's definitely not against the decisions made by that board because they do a lot and they do look at different aspects. Couple of things I think we need to look at as we do this too, is how do we deal with this situation and future situations with other paper roads? Does this, whatever we do here, do we say we're gonna establish a new frontier into those situations? This one's unique. And the reason I brought that up is this is the first time that the 15 years I've been on, and it may even be in the 1996 situation, but we've never had a situation where all of the property owners weren't on the same page to do this. This would be the first time we as a government would be saying, we're forcing property owners to take property. We've never, ever done that before in the history that I've been here. And it, I started to look at this too as, okay, we do this then, and we, we have that obligation by the, the charter to, does it have a best interest of the public health, safety and welfare? Now what happens when we start getting requests? If you've got these all over, you've got one owner that wants it, the rest don't. Or what if none of the owners do and people on the outside for other reasons pursue it? How do we deal with that? And it's a question philosophically, this one's easier if it was all the property owners that we've had before. We've had that happen with the paper alleys or properties where they all have said, we agree. Or it's just been one property owner. This one's unique because it, it is forcing two property owners. And another thing I think going forward is, is whatever we do, that it's in the future, that we set this up so that someday, if there's ownership changes or if the owners have different thoughts on how they want to pursue things, that we're planning accordingly, you know, for that, so.
I guess I don't understand what you're saying there. If there's different property owners on this.
No, like if, like if we're, if we're doing vacating or other properties where we're vacating and it might, it might be nice in this situation, but, you know, like if there's a change in an owner, if they want to develop, or let's say an owner doesn't want to develop and different things like that, just to make sure that's all fitting any long-term goals too. Because I do think where we get into a hardship is, let's say, whatever decision we make here, we, we have to be willing to, to do in future settings. And that's the one, the one thing that's really been hard on my mind is, is us getting to where we're starting to force people to take property on and, and maintaining it. Now, on the other end, something that I find very interesting is, in fairness to people, is when we have those properties, to make sure we're maintaining them. And maybe we are, I don't know that, because maybe they're supposed to be in a, a natural setting. But in other properties too, or other paper alleys and roads, so that, that's been a concern. I just want to make sure I can see the point of, you know, pointing out that this is different.
Well, and, and to your concern about setting precedents, I think that, you know, this one, however it's decided, is gonna go down in the history books. Now we've experienced it.
Right.
So make, maybe it makes us wiser in the future if something like this comes up again. But I would think that if it comes up again, that we would, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to step through the same process and there's probably gonna be some certain different set of circumstances that are gonna have to be considered. So I don't think that, you know, I guess necessarily worrying, necessarily worrying about precedents should hold us back from.
No, but like, for example, the big one to me is the property ownership.
Oh, I, and I completely understand.
If we, if we make that statement today, there's gotta be some consistency versus saying it's gonna depend on who it is or where it's at. And that, that, you're absolutely right though, the procedures will be unique to their area.
Maybe there's a way for those property owners who don't want it, we maybe quit claim that over to the property owner who does want it.
That's what I was gonna ask. He would take it. So that if there, if, if there was, that's what I was gonna ask, if there was a property owner that didn't want that extra 33 feet or whatever it is, if they could avoid acquiring that? Is there anything built in for that? Or can we create something for that?
No.
I don't know.
Although the property owners certainly can work that out amongst themselves. So if, if by vacating the road, 33 feet attaches to each side of the road, then once it's vacated, those property owners are certainly not prevented from quit claiming or deeding that portion of the roadway acquired to the adjacent property, at least not under statute. I don't think there would be anything under the zoning ordinance.
Right. Probably it would, because most likely they're gonna be attaching it to a parcel that already complies, so it just, just enlarges the parcel.
Right.
So you're not really, we're not really forcing people to take on property? If there's an escape clause?
You may be, you may be in this respect, that when you vacate the road, by operation of law, it attaches to the adjacent parcels. So if the city determines to vacate that road, then those, those adjacent lot owners acquire it by that operation of statute.
Okay.
That does not prevent them from joining that portion to an adjacent parcel if the other owner wants to take that on as well, so.
But we're not in the middle of that negotiation.
Right, okay.
Okay. So our option is that we could table this right now and ask for it to come back with some language in there that would allow for a pathway?
Yeah, essentially what the, you know, if the, if the city council decides that it wants to reserve an easement for some other public purpose, like a walking trail, then we could redraft it to reserve such an easement. That easement then would likely prevent any development over that portion reserved as an easement. Because it would be recorded against the property the same way you would any other easement.
Wouldn't the utility easement though already accomplish that?
It could, but I don't know specifically where the, I mean, it, the ordinance as written says we reserve a utility easement. I presume that's where the utilities are currently located.
There aren't any utilities, Mike.
Across that.
Across the.
Yeah. So it doesn't necessarily, it's worded right now as what we call an easement engrossed so that it involves the entire 66 feet, although you wouldn't need 66 feet to put utilities in there typically. So either that or the city council can adopt it as written too, so.
Well, I think that we did hear that as a concern that, you know, that I would like us to keep in mind is that, is that trail through there because of people having to go out to North Boulevard and losing the opportunity to use that as they are out in the community.
It seems like you're giving something to the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
Some neighbors feel like we're taking something away, so this is giving something back. It just seems like a compromise to me.
I also think that, I like what Mike said, is that an easement like that would preclude development over that easement that would help protect that area as well.
Okay, so based on all of that.
It sounds like the, based on all that, unless council chooses to, to say something in addition, it seems that the action would be this evening to table this. And Mike, does it require automatically that it comes back in two weeks?
Would it, but it wouldn't have to be a table or are we just asking for it to come back?
You can do it either way. You're not required to make a decision on this. So I understand that the council wants an alternative version, reserving some sort of an easement for a possible walking path in the future. I can draft that section pretty quickly so that you can decide on the matter in two weeks. Well, either, you'll have both versions in front of you, so you can decide at that point in time which version you like better.
Okay. So does someone want to make a motion?
So do we need a motion then?
Not necessarily, except that.
To table?
You know, you may want to, you may certainly want to specify that you're going to make it, or it's your intent right now to make a decision at your next meeting.
So there would be a motion to table it, to make the decision at the next meeting?
You could certainly do that.
Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion that we wait to vote on this until our next meeting, at which time we will get some options for easement language.
And I think, just to reiterate before council votes, I think what, what we're gonna present is an alternative version of the ordinance that includes the, the different language in it.
Okay. Anybody want to support that?
Support.
Okay, any further discussion? Sandy, could we have a roll call please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melima?
Yes.
Chipper?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes. Yes.
I think it was easier to have my teeth drilled tonight at the dentist. It's way more comfortable.
I enjoy it.
Well, let's see how the next.
Okay.
Yeah.
At this time, we will go ahead and open the public hearing to consider the approval of resolution to adopt ordinance 2014-03 to assess annual service fee for the Cadillac Housing Commission Development Support. Marcus, do you want to?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before you this evening in your council packet is a, essentially a slightly modified communication based on the communication that was provided at the time that this public hearing was set. I have spoken with Owen, our finance director, who has been running point for the most part on this issue, and was gonna ask him to provide just a, sort of a brief summary and again, if you would, kind of just compare and contrast the differences. That'd be great.
Yep, okay. I'll try and be very brief. This is a, an application or a, based on an application that was filed, I believe, with MISTA last week, and that's for their new project for the housing commission out at the Cornerstone property. At this point, we know that they're looking at 24 additional units and have offered the ordinance that's before you tonight to pay 10% of their annual shelter rents. This kind of looks and smells a lot like the one that, that came from First Housing Corporation a year or so ago, where no action was taken to change the ordinance to basically open up that housing tax exemption related to those kinds of, of projects. But this one is completely different. There are two acts that enable these kinds of projects. One is the Michigan State Housing Development Authority Act, and that's Public Act 346 of 1966. That was the enabling legislation where basically private companies formed under a specific ownership structure could apply for MISTA. MISTA would declare them basically tax exempt, give them funding, and then they would automatically be subject to a, a 10% service fee in lieu of taxes. When the housing commission and, and our staff talked more than two years ago, that was initially the, the approach that they were, were using. And we spent a lot of time talking to them. They observed and we talked with them regarding the, the response and feelings of council at that time regarding service fees and tax exemptions related to that MISTA act. They subsequently had, had pulled their request back in 2012 for that project. And though we had kind of maintained some communication with the housing commission, really it kind of went from, from our perspective, though they were, were working on it on their side, kind of went dormant a little bit from, from our perspective. Then, just very recently, they contacted us again and said they'd like to, to propose that we pass the ordinance that's before you tonight to, to pay a 10% service fee in lieu of taxes. But it's, it's, now it's under the, the ownership umbrella and structure of the housing commission. So that kicks it into the Housing Commission Act or the Housing Facilities Act, which is Public Act 18 of 1933. That was the enabling legislation under which the housing commission was formed by ordinance of the city. So the, the formation of the housing commission is actually in the. is actually in the Code of Ordinances of the, of the city established under this public act. Under that act, any project that the housing commission undertakes within its mission to, to provide this kind of housing in the community is automatically exempt, and they're not by statute required to pay anything. The only option for them to pay anything is for the city then, basically by our initiation, to pass an ordinance requiring payment of up to 10%, or not to exceed the, the amount of taxes they would have paid had they been a fully tax-exempt organization. So over the course of those two years, the, the structure of the, of the project, not physically, but, but kind of ownership-wise, changed, and therefore it's coming under the umbrella of the housing commission, the mission of the housing commission. They're automatically declared tax-exempt as a, as a housing commission established by ordinance of the city. And this ordinance that's before you tonight would, would do two things. It would both formalize the, the agreement that is in place. And the only one that, that, that we could find that, that we're, they're paying their 10% service fee right now is from 1961. So it's a very old agreement. It formalizes the current arrangement. They've continued to pay the 10% on their current projects. And then it, then it formalizes the, also that 10% maximum statutory allowed service fee for the new project. So the, the ownership structure will have to be compliant with Public Act 18 of 1933 for it to work this way. I would assume that burden is on the, the housing commission to make sure that this, this project moves forward. It does state that in the ordinance. It, it defines basically the qualifying entities under the, under the act. And so they would have to, to comply with that then, to be automatically exempt under this statute. So they would be allowed to do this as a housing commission. Just to give you kind of some details as an aside, they could buy any parcel of property within the city, put up a project. That project would be automatically exempt from taxes without any action of the city council. They're already statutorily allowed to own property, do these projects, issue bonds, anything like that, and be automatically exempt. Then we would have to kind of come around on the backside and, and pass that ordinance to levy the service fee. So I think, in my opinion, it shows some good faith by the housing commission to offer this 10% up right from the outset. I think it, it, it stays within the mission of their organization. It's, it's not a huge development. It's 24 units. And that kind of sums up what I would want to, to give informationally, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, if there's anyone who would like to add anything?
I can, if you'd like me to, but that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, thank you, too.
Just to let you know that our entire board is here tonight.
Oh, great.
I could see that.
Tom, instead, Mike Dolak, Mike Collin, Gordine Davis, and Judy Coffey.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions between Owen and I, we can probably answer them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, if no one comes forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the Ordinance 2014-03 to assess an annual service fee for Cadillac Housing Development Project.
Support.
Any more discussion?
Just a couple of things. First, Owen, thank you for the, that explanation. And I know Judy was here last meeting. I did call her. I, I did ask a lot of questions, and I know that got perceived of not being for it. But I think Owen's explanation was very helpful tonight. That explained where we were at two years ago. There was some changes in, up until then, we hadn't, from the staff's side, hadn't really been told those changes. That was an excellent explanation. It sounds like prior, there was, as Marcus had said, was like a third party involved, and this time it's just the housing commission. So I thank you for that explanation. That, when that came up, then, was this, is this being recommended then by the staff that it is the 10%? Or is this something that, I know was?
Well, I'd, I'd pass it at 50 if we could, but 10% is the max. So, yeah, the more the merrier.
Thanks, John.
It's, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's probably, you know, eight to 10,000. I will say, there is still third parties able to be involved. They're able to syndicate tax credits that they receive from Mishta for this project. However, the act is very clear that, that the housing commission has to maintain sole control over the project. So I wanted to point that out based on that, on that statement. There are still maybe some, some other parties involved from a, a funding, and, and this is where it gets hazy for me because it's, these, these investors will come in and purchase tax credits, and, and they're able to syndicate those credits, and it does state that in the ordinance. But the, the sole general partner, total control, ownership, those, those kinds of requirements will continue to need to be met to qualify still on the ownership structure.
What I was asking is, I know prior when we were talking about the percentage, that was when the council was looking at the old system. With this one, I guess I'm asking, is the housing commission, they're comfortable with the 10%? Or were they recommending to us a lower percent, and we're, we're not going with the recommendation?
They offered 10% right, right from the beginning, yep. It fit within their, their performance.
Sounded like we had more flexibility this time than previous, as explained. So I was just making sure they weren't proposing like a 4% or something, and we were doing a higher percent.
No.
I just wanted to add, if I may jump into the fray here. I believe the 4% may have been a number that the First Housing Corporation company, back when we had last discussed a similar type of project, was what they were trying to get the city to consider. And in our, through our deliberations, we were saying that that wasn't going to be acceptable, and that we wanted to have, you know, the maximum allowed per statute, which was the 10% threshold. So, which we actually found later in other First Housing Corporation projects, they were actually paying 10%.
10%?
Yep.
And there was also 4% in the original, this was from back in 2012, for the housing commission. So they originally, two years ago, you know, when they're running their numbers, had asked for a lower amount. But this time, right from, from, you know, and like I said, it, it's only been recently that this has all come together, but it's been 10%. They never asked for less on this, on this proposal, or this request.
Okay, is there anything else? Okay. Sandy, could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Nice to see the whole commission here. Hi, guys. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, then, on our agenda, we have some communications. Sandy?
Yes, the first one is for, from Mike Costa from the Wexford-Missakee ISD to display a banner from March 31st to April 14th for the Wexford-Missakee Great Start Program.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the display of a banner from March 31st to April 14th, 2014, for the Wexford-Missakee Great Start and Month of the Young Child.
Support.
Anybody else?
Nothing.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yep.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The second one is the item that was ended, I am added to the agenda this evening. It's a request from Liz McCord from the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra to display a banner from February 18th to February 24th.
So we'll make a motion?
Even though those orchestra people are pretty shady, I'll make a motion to approve the request from Liz McCord and the Cadillac Symphony Orchestra to display a banner from February 18th to February 24th, 2014.
Support.
Could we have a roll call, please, Sandy?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Mayor, members of the city council, just for your benefit, members of the public as well, when we do have banners that hang across Mitchell Street, it does require MDOT's approval, too. We just received this request formally today in, in the application. You just approved it. Tomorrow, Sandy will be able, our city clerk will be able to enter it into the MDOT system for then, their approval. But until we, until we get it, we can't necessarily move forward and actually draw the banner across.
How long does that normally take?
Do you know?
It shouldn't take too long. I mean, they, they asked us to give them a few weeks, but.
MDOT?
MDOT. I actually did enter it today. They will see it tomorrow because MDOT was closed today because it's a state holiday.
Okay. So you're thinking we'll have a response? You're thinking possibly tomorrow?
Possibly.
Okay.
Maybe.
Great.
Just wanted to put that out.
Thank you. Thank you.
Because that is tomorrow, isn't it?
I was going to say, because we don't have two weeks. So, okay. All right, and then on the agenda, we have some appointments that Sandy's going to present.
The first one is a recommendation regarding a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority of Chris Huckle, recommending a four-year term with an expiration date of 3/6/18.
I'll make a, our motion to approve Chris Huckle for a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority for a new term expiring 3/6 of 2018.
Support.
Can we have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
The second one is a reappointment of Julie Theobald to the Board of Review for an additional two-year term to expire on March 1st, 2016. She'll be representing the Second Ward.
She's been a very good member of our board, and it's so critical having people that are trained with that experience. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve Julie Theobald for a two-year term, which would go from March 1st, 2014 to 2016, for the Second Ward regular member of the Board of Review.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next one is a reappointment to the Board of Review for Don Talgenhoff as an alternate in the Fourth Ward for a two-year term to expire on March 1st, 2016.
This is a committee that they can only attend if the person in their ward is not there. So Don's always more than willing to help. But Barb Johns is the regular member.
She never misses.
She's always there, so. But he still comes and is trained as well, so another good member. And I'll make a motion that we approve Don Talgenhoff as the alternate for the Fourth Ward for a two-year term for the Board of Review from March 1st, 2014 to the, March 1st, 2016.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thanks to all the volunteers.
Absolutely. And now we are going to have the city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. There were two items. As you know, the second item was canceled. The, one of the regional planners from the Northwest Michigan Council of Governments was going to provide a presentation, but was actually out of town and unable to make it this evening. But we will get him back in front of council as soon as possible. The, so the only remaining item is the setting of budget-related work sessions. What I would like to propose is a setting of a work session on March 17th with respect to primarily our capital improvements program. And I also will hopefully have a draft as well of collaboration of, of all of the input I'm getting back from staff on city council goals. I think it can kind of go hand in hand to at least present to you at that point as well. I would also like to look at setting of a work session on April 7th. That would be primarily for the, the general budget. CIP is a part of the general budget, but at that meeting, we would get into more general budget discussion issues. In the time that I've been here, there's been some years in which we go for additional meetings as well. And so therefore, I'm also recommending that we look at April 21st as another potential budget work session, work session date. I'm suggesting that we have a start time of 5:30 for these meetings. We need to have the budget adopted. Owen, I believe it's the second meeting you made?
Yeah, I'll just help lay out the timing a little bit. My, my plan is to have the CIP document to council on March the 10th, and that way there will be a week to, to go through it. That's about 150-page document, pretty straightforward on that one. And then we would talk about it on, on the 17th. And then the budget is due to council on April 1st. So the, it will be delivered in fall on that day. And then we would have that first work session on the 7th, after council's had a few days to, to read through it. And that night then also would probably be the public hearing on the capital improvement program. And then following that, on the 21st is when we're required by our charter to have the, the public hearing for the annual operating budget. So I would recommend that we, we kind of reserve that night for further discussion on the budget. And then it's a whole month before the budget has to be adopted. So we, we like to lay out that timeline each year. So between April 21st and May 19th, there would be ample opportunity for further discussion or clarification or changes. And so as a schedule, on the 10th of March, hopefully council will have, the, the CIP will meet on the 17th to talk about that. On the April 1st, council will get the budget. On the 7th, we'll meet on that, have a public hearing. And as council would be ready to do that, approve the program on that night for the CIP. And then on the 21st, have the public hearing for the budget, and then the whole month until adoption. So that would be the process.
Nice.
Small amount of work for my team to do in the meantime, but we'll get it done.
Mr. Pachek, just a question. I think it's been lingering out, like, four months we've been working on the goals, and, and that's usually part of the, the budget where we approve them. Is there any plans? Are we just getting, I mean, it's about four months now we've been on them. Is there any plan to have those finalized to either have for approval? Or I don't remember if we were having to meet again on them or just approve them.
We were going to bring them back for approval.
Well, we need, we need to bring them back for approval. This is something that we have not done, actually, in the last few years with respect to looking at the individual. to looking at the individual council-related goals, the other goals that are part of the budget.
Are you talking about the council goals? I didn't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, like the goals for... But we usually, as part of the budget, the... They used to be together, then it just, we took ours out and they just had the staff. But I guess it'd be the council-related.
Do we normally have a goal session?
We had one prior to... We had one in the fall, and then we had that second one.
Well, that's kind of awkward.
When you were here, we had a goal session.
You weren't here for that meeting either, were you?
Neither one of them. They had two meetings.
Yeah.
We were going to also see what the staff came back with and then have a look at what the staff came back with and what we had determined. Because the staff, we did not have input from the rank and file.
Well, it sounds like we need to have a working session to talk about all of that information, because I don't know what that is.
You weren't... I was... And I misstated, you didn't go to one. We had them both before.
I was not invited.
No, they were before.
She wasn't here.
They were both before.
Before she was here.
We didn't finalize anything because we wanted input from the rank and file. We said decisions have to be started at the bottom and work up, not up-down.
And we're...
Which is why I mentioned that I'm hoping to have that on the 17th as a part of your CIP meeting, to have those goals. Because the charge was to try to get feedback from all members of staff as to how they would prioritize.
So that's when we'll see it come back to us? Okay.
You're including the council goals in that work session?
Yes.
But not as part of the capital improvement program, just at that same work session?
Yes, just right, just at that same work session.
Sorry, I forgot. I was thinking that you stuck on, but it was supposed before.
And just if I could jump in really quick. With respect to the capital program, just as a quick reminder, we do try to look five years out. As you'll see in the format, it really hasn't changed much with respect to our need to defer capital equipment and infrastructure costs based upon resources. And so while it's certainly a dense document, I don't want to diminish the size of the document nor its importance, you know, it's... I firmly believe there'll be time to split between going through at least what we're looking at and next year's plan, and then also spend some time going through what should hopefully look like a consolidated report on all the surveying information that I'm getting back from everybody in the city, so, on the citywide goals.
And we also, because at that session, we came up with like a list of council goals. Maybe could we get a copy of that, those notes with the mayor and all of us getting... Leading into that, so that's a refresher?
Yeah.
So that's going to be some major homework that week.
For an introduction?
Yeah, yeah. Major homework that week.
I should have brought it up sooner, because I think we intended on having it so both of you had input, and I don't think we ever did.
I forgot about it.
True.
I submitted mine in writing. Did you all get a chance to look at that?
We did. And they were added to the list.
They're up on my living room wall.
All right. You look at them every day.
I had them engraved on a broad plaque. Dog, I don't know where that came from.
Marcus, was that all, then?
That was all.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the... I just nodded for a second. Is the revenue generating, or excuse me, revenue sharing that we heard so much about this past week for counties, is that going to affect us as well? That the government...
Well, you know, the... There was a couple of components included in the communication that I saw. There was the traditional component, and there's something new, but I'm still kind of trying to get my head around exactly what it looks like. The one thing that I did see was at least initially, they were proposing a couple of percent increase, I think is the number. And again, it's very preliminary in the first proposal to the statutory revenue sharing. So, you know, the constitutional piece creeps up based on just increases in sales tax revenues and things like that. But the statutory piece, or the EVIP, I guess we refer to it as, there's supposed to be a moderate increase in that. So the amount of that is going to hopefully become a little bit more clear here over the next couple of months, but...
I just wanted to add, there's been a lot of discussion by that. One of the strongest advocates for cities is the Michigan Municipal League. They have really been close to it, and they're still trying also to sort of define what it's going to mean in that economic vitality incentive program, or EVIP, as it's commonly known. You know, they set up some real stringent performance measures and benchmarks in order to qualify for the lesser amount that the city's been receiving over the last few years. They're in the process now of adapting it in an effort, I believe, they being the state, to try to make it look more attractive with respect to the future, proposed future tax reform on the industrial personal property tax legislation. So there's several major things happening all at once. One, you know, they're looking, as Owen just mentioned, and Councilmember Spohman, as you mentioned, about looking at enhancing revenue sharing. How that will impact us, we're not quite sure, but anything positive is positive. Anything going up is best. But then, two, how it'll all come together in the framework of the potential elimination of a revenue stream, which is the industrial personal property tax. We're still waiting, if you will, for the sort of prescription on how that will work. By all accounts, it looks like there's been a lot of work going on in Lansing that will improve the situation for cities so that the impact to cities will be lesser than what was originally anticipated. But nobody knows, at least to my knowledge, exactly what that all means. So take it for what it's worth, which is right now, just air coming out of my mouth.
And Lansing.
Hot air.
And Lansing.
Okay. So next, we have the adoption of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you. If I may just simply introduce this item, we do have an industrial facilities tax abatement request from Spencer Plastics in the amount of $365,246. This is for the purchase of equipment and building improvements to the facilities. It'll assist Spencer Plastics with the retention of 18 positions, as well as the creation of two new positions. This evening, council is being asked to set a public hearing for this IFT for their March 3rd meeting.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to set a public hearing for March 3rd to consider this request from Spencer Plastics for an IFT certificate in the amount of $365,246.
Support. Anything further? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Also in our packets, we have the minutes of Boards and Commissions. And included this week was the minutes of the Wexford County Airport Authority meeting that was held on January 16th, as well as the minutes of the Cadillac Arts Council meeting, which was held on January 27th. At this time, we will open a public comment again for three minutes to anyone who would like to participate.
Well, I will participate. Loretta DeJulian Snyder, 1107 Sunset Lane, Cadillac, Michigan. I do not live in Kenwood Park, but I could hear the conversation here, and I just don't like the way the conversation was going. I didn't hear it from the mayor, but I heard it from others. There were all ways, like, how can we do this? I heard nothing about the other people, the 35 people who signed a petition. I heard nothing about the man whose grandchildren play on the property, and I don't know what other children play on that property. So I think you have to take those things into consideration, too. Not just how can we do this for somebody, but we should do the right thing.
Thank you.
Ed Bosworth, a little over two hours ago, Marcus Pecia used the term "the cart before the horse." And if I wanted to develop or take possession of the property behind our lots, I would first make sure that I owned them before I went in, cut the trees, cleared the brush, filled in one place, took possession like it's mine. Somebody else said, "Well, I haven't really been by there lately." Good grief, if you drive by there and you ever saw it before, it's totally different now. And I find it hard to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Durant. I spoke earlier. I just wanted to say, and I understand you're trying to keep everybody happy. That's understandable. When they do start considering a walkway, do consider, if you do it, not wide enough for a vehicle, a car, because you don't want traffic going through there. If kids are there, if bicycles are there, people with dogs, it's just something to consider. You know what I mean? You know, just... I mean, I know you're trying to keep everybody happy and keep, you know, everybody above board and stuff. And he's saying about kids playing in the woods. I don't understand which woods. Right behind the one house, he's... There's like three or four, maybe five trees, tall trees, older trees, right where that power line is. Then you've got the old road, the road. And then you've got trees, basically, which would be our side. And if I do, contrary to what people think, if it does get abandoned, I am not going to go down Vic. The people that own lots farther down on Vic can do whatever they want to do with Vic. They're using it for storage, too. I don't care. That's the least of my worries. I'm going to end up, if it goes, works, I'm going to come in off the corner, like off of, basically right off the corner on the north side of Kenwood, where our eastbound would be. Just to clarify, is all.
Thank you.
Doug Moore, I had raised my hand. I wanted to point out council members were all saying that the planning board had recommended this, so therefore, they were kind of going with that. I wanted to bring up that at the planning board, there's things that have changed. The other neighbor that didn't care one way or the other because she thought I was for it is not in favor of it now. So had that been disclosed at the planning meeting, it might have been a different story. So keep that in mind as you consider this. And I also appreciate Artz, he's the only one that has talked about forcing property on people. You know, it's going to become a liability to me instead of the city. And I don't think that's fair. I really don't. If everybody in the neighborhood, like I told you, if everybody in the neighborhood wanted that, I would say, let's do it then. But when all my neighbors are against it, and two of the three adjoining landowners are against it, I just don't think it's right to be forced. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Durant, I don't believe all the neighbors are against it. There are a number of neighbors that I know that's... Whose names are not on that petition. I didn't take a petition around asking people to say, to sign it that they were for vacating it. I know there's people at the end, at both ends, the end right by Vic and the end right by Seneca, they're not on that petition. And they keep saying there's over 34 people that have signed on there. I keep counting, and I come up with 30. I don't know if there's names I'm not seeing or whatever. And I honestly don't know why they're all against it. It doesn't go by their properties. I understand there's an issue with Moores and now with Fosters. I wish it wasn't that way. I wish we were all in agreement. I didn't know we were starting a neighborhood feud when we asked for this. I'm not looking to be fighting with my neighbors. Excuse me.
I'm Andy Vanna. I'll... You know, I guess my question was, you know, if 35 people had signed a petition, it's not enough. What is, 70, 100, 500? I mean, those signatures were compiled, all of them except for, I think, three, in a matter of four days. So, I mean, you figure, okay, that ought to do it. So the way I see it, it's... I can see a lot of benefit for private interest, and I see very little, if any, for public interest. And, you know, I feel like I'm a mushroom that you guys are keeping in the dark and feeding manure, you know? This isn't... If this is how the process works, that's... I don't know what you're supposed to do. I don't... I'm not happy with the process if that's how this in fact works out. And a compromise, I don't think a compromise works for anybody. I don't think Bob would benefit there either. So I think it's all or nothing. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Is there anyone else this evening?
I'm Gary Christensen. This lady here on the end asked a question the first of this meeting, why that other block of Kenwood was closed back in 96, I think it was. Well, I've lived there since 1972, and I can tell you why it was closed. There was two houses on the north side of Kenwood. There was empty property on the south side of Kenwood. Well, the two people on the north side of Kenwood had their house up for sale, their houses. And they decided if they had another 35-foot of frontage, they'd get a little more money. And that's why that street got closed, because they come up here and they got it closed. I don't know how, but they did. And I use that road all the time, because it's right around the corner from my house. And now you've got to go down to the Boulevard to get out, and you got to pull way out in the middle of the road so you can see to the west. I've been hit, almost hit there a dozen times. But that's why it got closed. I just thought I'd answer your question for you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comments. And we'll go with the good of the order, starting with Councilmember Spohman.
Well, it's nice to see there are so many people here tonight, and I really appreciate hearing from everyone. Obviously, this is going to be a really difficult decision for all of us to make. And, yeah. I... I'm done with that for right now. I'm going to focus on something else that is just structural in nature with the agenda. It appeared that we had some people here that left because the meeting went on too long and they didn't get a chance to speak. And I'm wondering if we want to take a look at how the agenda is structured, because the first public comment is for agenda items only, and then we go right into the public hearing. And I think that we changed public hearing to be up on the agenda, so we don't have to keep a lot of people sitting in the House for a long time. But now we're missing that other group of folks who was here, who, for neither one of those, it would be nice to be able to have them heard earlier on, like during public comment, or I don't know when. It's just too bad that it went the way it did tonight. I would have liked to, you know, since we all worked with them and...
We'll invite them back. We'll invite them back.
To have them, yeah, they'll come back.
Councilmember Shippers.
Okay. After I get past my headache from thinking that all this stuff and going back and forth and back and forth. On another note, last weekend I was able to attend Michigan Municipal League Academy for Elected Officials, where I got a lot of very in-depth information on process and on just how we do things, the legalities and everything, that even after having been doing this for four years and being in the beginning of my second term, there was still a lot to learn. So I took Councilmember Stevens' lead, who has attended several of these and went and did that. And it was very, very beneficial. So I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I have some things to share with others if anybody's interested. I think that's all. There's more snow out there. It's getting harder and harder and harder to keep it off your walkway. But Sally forth. Keep going. It's, it's almost March and by the end of April, the snow may stop. So I remember one year when the lakes were still frozen and snowing on Mother's Day. So maybe not this year. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Melona.
Almost. That was a good trip.
I just want to mention that on February 11th, we had our Cadillac Area Manufacturers Association meeting at, at the Career Tech Center. We had 34 members there. Larry Mulder was there and presented from U of M. The study, which the city had received a grant for, I believe is up on the web, is it not, the presentation?
Going to be put up this week.
And the study. It encompassed seven counties and the study does show support for a incubator and a innovation center. And Larry also talked about the various grants that are available for some of our defense contractors within the community and funds that are available. And by the way, Rick did an excellent article, was at the meeting, and the Cadillac News did a nice job. It was on page six. What was it, Thursday, Rick? I had rubbed page six in. But anyway, it was an excellent article. And, but anyway, Larry did an excellent job. I had, I would say 93%, 95% buy-in out of the members. And several members come up to me and ask how they could get involved with the various 12 universities as far as they needed, had some needs for research and also some internships. So that went very, very well. We're going to do a town hall meeting in April. We haven't set a date yet. And then from there, the advisory committee will be set up and we'll be moving forward, hopefully, on grants. Want to compliment the street crew. What a job, snow, snow plowing this year. They do a phenomenal job and where to go with it. But I know that they're working long shifts and they're just doing a tremendous job. So I'd really like to congratulate them and thank them. That's it.
Councilmember Stevens.
Well, first I wanted to congratulate that Councilwoman Shippers for going to that. Hopefully, did they get you all set up about the credits to use?
Yep.
There's just a lot of things you probably already do that get you credits, but.
Yeah.
Border review, and I'm going to have to ask our, our great Owen Wilson, just, I'm part of this. Owen Wilson Roberts, I mean. I always say Owen Wilson to him and so.
It's a longstanding joke.
For the public, there is going to be a notice coming from the city that lets you know either good or bad news on your, on your assessment, but it also includes the dates of the border review and has a nice insert that explains some things about border review. And it's easier to find the dates of the border review on that. What I was going to ask Mr. Roberts was if, do you have an idea, like, is that at the end of this month that that gets mailed? Do you?
It's got to be, I think, is it nine or 10 days before the border review meets for the first time?
I think you're right.
I think is the date. So it's, yeah, it's always right in the February first day or two of March.
I've been getting a lot of calls on that, but it is, there is something that'll be going out and in March 12th is the first day that people can come. So you could expect it at the end of this month. But that, it's very helpful, the insert too, that kind of explains a little bit about border review. The planning board, I wanted to first give credit to Mr. Adams. Again, your presentations, I appreciate your thoroughness and how you show both sides in the detail. So thank you for that. That was very helpful. If you haven't seen it, if you get a chance, and I know you can find it off the, the website for the station, I believe, or not, but watching that planning board meeting is helpful too. Because you get the, the stuff on paper, but then you could see their discussions and, and how they discuss things too, may be helpful. I happened to watch that and thought it was kind of helpful too. And then you already mentioned it, I was going to thank Doug for his camera meeting and, and what's going on there again. That was a nice presentation that was made. And again, for all your efforts, that's going to be something that Cadillac's going to look back and a lot of it's going to be because of your efforts. So thanks. And that's it.
Thank you. Marcus?
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to remind everybody, especially the public, that we're still under a run water order. I did get an update today from our utilities director that there are approximately 25 customers still out there that, that need to be thawed. And that number is fluctuating, you know, daily. There are some folks that get added to the list, some folks that get taken away from the list. When people call in, especially if they've, if they've been out for several days, which could be the case, we are and have made it known that they can come into the fire department to, to obtain, to obtain potable drinking water. We've also provided folks with a direct phone number to the department. There's no answering machine that picks up, so if nobody picks up, then just simply try back a little bit later for access on weekends and for access before or after normal hours of this facility, which is just simply nine to five Monday through Friday. I'm going to try to make a quick update, if I can, if I remember, at all of our future meetings until such time that the, that the run water requirement is lifted. But right now, it is still certainly in effect.
I have a question about that. And we were having a debate. It is a pencil lead stream or a pencil stream?
Pencil lead stream.
I was right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
See that?
Basically, try to, if it's, you know, possible with your faucet, just turn it ever so slowly so that the moment where it becomes a stream versus a trickle.
Beats, right.
That's good enough. So.
I was right. Thank you.
Good clarification.
You're right. Yeah. I've had a lot, we've had that debate a few times with various people, sorry. Not my darn.
Okay. Well, I'd like to share that I had the opportunity to attend the chambers leadership session that they offered last week. And Kelly Smith from Baker and Dave Cox from the Career Tech Center were the presenters. And it was a most enjoyable afternoon. It was all about positivity and positive attitude. And it was a full house and they did just a great job. So if you ever have an opportunity to go to one of those leadership sessions, take advantage of that. I would also like to congratulate the Cadillac ski team for their regional championship this week. That's pretty awesome. And as well, the Cadillac High School Band and Orchestra participated. Actually, they hosted, after a snow cancellation, they hosted solo and ensemble and Cadillac walked away with a phenomenal number of Division One ratings. We have an incredible amount of students here at Cadillac that are very, very talented. So just wanted to say congratulations and appreciate all of the hard work that they put in. Is there anything else this evening? Okay, then we'll adjourn this meeting.
Bundle up.